Morning, everyone. It is the appointed hour. We have a quorum present, and therefore I would like to go ahead and call to order this meeting of Douglas County Board of Commissioners, which will be conducted in compliance with Nebraska's open meeting laws, the copy of which is on the back wall. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands the Constitution under God in the judicial and justice realm. And Mike is asking me to remind people that there is an automatic deferment later at the back of the room also. We will convene first as the Board of Equalization. Mr. Clerk, could we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Borgeson? Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Kraft is present virtually, but cannot vote. Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Mr. Chair?
Present, thank you. Item A, approval of the minutes from Tuesday, November 10th. Item B is calling for Tuesday, December 8th as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan to approve A and B. Questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Item C, citizens' comments. Is there anybody wishing to address the Board of Equalization on any item that is not on the agenda? This is the opportunity to do so. Good morning, Mr. Bowman.
Good morning. My name is Monty Bowman with Abrams.
Right in the mic, if you would, please, Monty.
My name is Monty Bowman with Abrams.
Okay.
We've got just one sheet of paper that we want to share.
I can still barely hear you. I want to make sure everybody can hear what you're saying. If you pull the mic a little closer to you, Monty. The mic with the red light. Okay, yeah, I guess I don't see one of them. But any of that, I want to make sure everybody can hear you, Monty. Excuse me. Please, go ahead.
There's just one sheet of paper that I'm sharing. This is from a 2018 referee recommendation. This has been going on since 14, continues now, but the language they used at this time is much more specific. And it comes around the fact that the county assessor uses its cost approach for new and unique properties. They use Marshall and Swift valuation services, paid subscription service, to create that. And that's also available to every referee, every coordinator in their professional capacity, but they absolutely have no access to this whatsoever as referees or coordinators. So, no matter what, if you're a bowling alley, a bank, no matter what your argument is, they don't have access to anything on the cost approach to make any adjustments whatsoever. And that's what they're referring to, is it's embedded into their system. This was something we just discovered in the last few weeks and started going back a little further. And it was just in the 18 that they were very specific about the language that they don't have access to that. So, if you ask a citizen about the condition and quality of their property, we are in a floodplain, we can prove that. They don't have access to make those changes whatsoever. None. So, you can make the arguments all day, but they don't have the tools available, so you're not going to get any kind of a fair hearing whatsoever. And I just mentioned this just a few weeks ago to Mr. Goodwilly and to Dan, and said this was an issue I've got to address way before anything else on a presentation because that's just basically, you can't have a hearing. You can file a protest all you want, all they can recommend is for the county assessor to make the change because they don't have access to do it. That's a big problem. Because anybody under the cost approach is going to have, you're not going to be able to get it changed. All right? So, it's how do the referees, how do the coordinators get access to that? Because some of these may be coming back for confession of judgment. And I know because we've appealed some based on condition, quality, some of them we know are in a floodplain, they're not designated as floodplain. If you want to complain about the quality, the condition, how many stories is the building? Is it classified in the right classification? How many square feet? That means the referee can't change any of that. And that's a big argument that all taxpayers are going to be bringing up. Because if you say the square footage is wrong, they can't change it. So, we've got to figure out a way for them to have access to that because otherwise, even if we do another hearing, they still won't have access.
All right.
So, that's what our big worry is.
Okay, thank you. Questions are, well, we aren't supposed to interact much here. You're just supposed to listen. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. We'll have to take it up and make sure that we're as well-prepared going forward as we can be.
However, I mean, I know that we're going to be ending up looking at a confession of judgment. Is there something that says that we will be able to address this at that time before we have to bring these back? Because we have a few at Turk right now. And this is something that we should be able to try to settle here locally, because if we can't settle it here, then that's going to be the same problem again next year. It's just obvious they've never had access for the last six years. So, before they even start anything in a confession of judgment, and I've talked to Turk enough to know because of the heavy load, they're going to be making some suggestions for confession of judgment, if it's possible. So, I just want to make sure that they're going to be addressing this.
Okay.
And finding a way to make sure it's accessible.
All right. All right, thank you.
All right.
Would anybody else care to address this board under citizen comments? Okay, if not, we will move to Resolutions D through F. And? Motion to approve D through F and adjourned by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We next will convene as the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Could we please have the roll call for that?
Commissioner Borgeson? Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Kraft is present virtually, but cannot vote. Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Mr. Chair?
Present, thank you. Item one is approval of the minutes from the Board of Corrections meeting October 13th. Motion by Commissioner Borgeson. I will second that to approve the minutes from October 13th. Questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
This is a, we're on corrections. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Citizens' comments. Would anybody care to address the Board of Corrections on anything not on the agenda? If not, we turn to the report from the Director of Corrections. Good morning, Mr. Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Mike.
Mike Myers, the Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have before you my report. This is for the month of October. And I see a typo right off the bat. Should say, following the third month of the fiscal year, we were over budget. Much of this can be attributed to CARES projects and the, we, I'm going to admit, overlooked one cost of all these CARES projects when we were calculating them. And that is the amount of our staff that it's going to take to be with all of the construction projects, of which there are eight, going on simultaneously at our campus right now. So, we do have some additional overtime costs that we're incurring that months ago when we were putting our proposal together, that we did not include in our equation. We did have, we did spend $354,051 on overtime during October. That was an increase of about $108,000 over the previous month, which is attributed to the reasons that I just gave for the, in large part. Since these projects are ongoing till the end of the year, and they're now working on multiple shifts, we do anticipate that they'll be, we'll continue to have higher-than-anticipated overtime costs throughout the rest of the year. And I've been having some conversations and emails with Mr. Lorenz to talk about our options regarding our budget in terms of the overtime costs for our CARES projects. Enclosure number two, community corrections and in-house programs. Due to the continued impact of COVID-19 on community corrections, that our data is significantly different than the norm. Many staff have been repurposed to allow essential functions to continue. Work release, reentry assistance program in the therapeutic communities, the GED and the law library, were all suspended during the month due to COVID-19 challenges and CARES construction projects. We are continuing to serve individuals in the law library through individual requests. Our reentry services staff have continued to basically become our virtual court staff, and they facilitated 426 court hearings and facilitated 70 hours of review of discovery material. We do have a plan to return those staff to their primary job duties by early 2021. 24/7 sobriety again has continued to be drastically altered from its normal operations during the pandemic. Nonetheless, that program still is operating and still has people being placed on it. There were 62 individuals placed on the program. There were 1,233 breath tests administered using remote testing technology. 21 of those tests were positive for alcohol use. There was one no-show for breath testing, and the overall compliance rate was 99.9%. 24 individuals were monitored for SCRAM monitoring for a total of 546 days. There were neuro no-shows, there were two tampering violations, and zero alcohol violations. The SCRAM compliance rate was also 99.9%. There were 52 saliva drug tests administered with two violations, and there were 121 drug testing patches submitted for testing with 29 violations. Work release was closed for the month. House arrests admitted 83 individuals. The reentry assistance program was closed. In our therapeutic communities and the jail, we have resumed some limited programming. As our staff have time between court hearings, they go back up to the housing units, provided that they have not been impacted by COVID, and are providing some activities in one-on-one and small group activities in those programs. Pretrial services continue to provide daily information to the courts regarding candidates for bond reduction and early pleas due to the response, in response to the pandemic. 31 individuals were referred for priority prosecution, saving 195 bed days. 313 individuals were placed on pretrial release. 1,348 people in total were managed on pretrial release with a 92% compliance rate. And I alluded to earlier, the law library has been closed, but individual requests are still being handled. Enclosure number three, compliance. The American Correctional Association was on-site the week of October 26th to conduct our accreditation audit. The auditors were very complimentary of our staff, of our facility, and our operations. The jail was found to be 100% compliant with all mandatory standards and 90% compliant with non-mandatory standards. To put that in context, there are nearly 400 standards for the jail. We were noncompliant on two mandatory standards because of physical plant constraints for which there's no workaround, and we've been noncompliant on those standards in previous audits as well. We were also noncompliant on a recreation-related standard due to changes in our procedures that we've been forced to make during the pandemic. Community Corrections, despite the fact that they were closed during the audit, was found to be 100% compliant with all mandatory and all non-mandatory standards. So, the, for those who are unfamiliar, the accreditation process is a three-year process, and you have to provide evidence that you followed these standards throughout those, that three-year period. So, even though the, that most of the community corrections has been closed since about the 1st of August, we were still able to demonstrate that we had been compliant with those standards. I want to congratulate all of our staff who make our department a success. And a special thank you to our compliance staff who carefully prepared for this audit under challenging circumstances. Enclosure number four, personnel. 16 officers graduated from the Training Academy on October 30th. Four officers, all below the rank of sergeant, left employment during October. This is an improvement over the previous few months. We concluded the month having 373 of our 396 authorized uniform staff, a net loss of four. A class of 22 new officers is scheduled and has begun training on November 9th. This will bring us very close to our authorized strength, probably for the first time in close to a decade. Also during October, Harvey Burtley was promoted to the rank of sergeant. Congratulations to Harvey on a job well done. Enclosure number five, our population. There were 1,356 admissions, 1,333 releases. Our high count was 1,261. Our low count was 1,187. Our average daily population was 1,221, which was an increase over September. However, I'm giving you this report a little bit later in the month than I normally would, and I'll let you know that our population has backed off somewhat during the month of November, thankfully. Custodial sanctioned bed days were at 85. The US Marshal population increased. The ICE population remains stable. The felony pretrial population increased. The misdemeanor population, pretrial population, increased. Probation violations remain stable, and the female population increased, and all four female housing units were open. Medical intake, excuse me, medical. Enclosure number six, there were 1,152 intake screenings, and there were 329 physical and health assessments. Inmates were sent out 23 times for emergent medical care. 10 of those were by 911. There were 13 hospitalizations, which resulted in 55 days of hospitalization. Again, that's like opening up another housing unit for one person at the jail for 50, you know, each time we have to do that, because we do have to staff that 24 hours a day. So, that is an additional, that is a higher number than normal, which probably also contributed to our increase in overtime. Enclosure number seven, mental health. There were 69 initial psychiatric assessments. There were also 69 initial mental health assessments. There were 48 mental health infirmary placements. There were three referrals to the Board of Mental Health and two long-term psychiatric facility transfers. Other noteworthy items. The Department of Corrections continues to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. As cases began rising in the community, we began to see an impact at the Department of Corrections as well. Thankfully, the number of cases remained relatively low, and we did not have large numbers of staff infected. The incarcerated population remained largely unaffected during October. Several CARES-funded renovation and improvement projects are underway and will continue for the remainder of 2020. The delivery of our first virus-killing robots is scheduled for November 19th. We did get that first shipment in, and they've been getting used widely throughout the jail. We have an additional part of our order which should come this week, and the final part of our order will arrive early in December. We are continuing to move forward with purchases funded by CARES to develop the ability to provide a wide variety of programming virtually. Our classroom-based program has, programs have been largely suspended during the past several months, and we hope that this is a first step to resuming those badly needed services. Renovations to our pre-book area of admissions were completed in October in anticipation of two body scanners arriving in November. After installation and staff training, we expect to go live with our body scanners today, actually, and in about 40 minutes. There'll be a person on-site from the company to assist us with our first live scans. So, thank you for your support on that initiative. This will greatly improve the safety, both of arresting of law enforcement and for corrections, as we have a scanner on each side of the wall, so to speak, pre-book, which will, those scans will be done in the presence of law enforcement as individuals are being arrested, but before they're in our custody, and also inside the facility to be used for a variety of other purposes. So, we appreciate your support for us to move forward on those two items. The vendor for tablets for the incarcerated population was selected, and now the lengthy process of planning and building infrastructure needed to implement the tablets has begun. There are many educational, family communication, and security advantages which will improve the overall functioning of the Department of Corrections when this project is completed during 2021. Proposals for body-worn cameras are currently being evaluated, and we anticipate this project will be implemented in 2021. The new security system continues to move forward. The selection of camera models and software was completed in October. The new system will be implemented in phases across the entirety of the Department of Corrections campus throughout 2021, and will likely be fully implemented by the first half of 2022. With that, I am ready for your questions.
You answered everything. I see no questions. Commissioner Boyle?
Thank you, Mike. That was a very good report. I wanted to ask you a couple of things, and I think I see the answer here. It's, but it deals with booking. You know, we had that god-awful event where the fellow got in with a gun and everything. Are, we're using the body scanner, is that we're going to use one? And would you talk a little bit more about that so taxpayers understand what's happening over there?
Sure. So, this is, this is something we actually have had our eye on for quite some time, well before this event occurred. And ironically, this board approved the purchase of the first body scanner five days before that incident occurred. It just hadn't been installed yet at that point. This, it's a very sophisticated, basically allows us to see anything that's metal or non-metallic, anything that doesn't belong on or in a person. There's, you know, one of the biggest risks that we have are people who attempt to swallow drugs when they're arrested rather than being, rather than being charged with the possession of them. And we've had some very near misses with people who've subsequently overdosed with that. This will allow us to identify these substances right up front as soon as they're arriving at our facility, should something like that have happened. We will also be able to detect weapons, knives, firearms, anything that may have been missed by a law enforcement officer. It, the technology is quite impressive. I'm anxious to be able to get a time when it's safe to bring you down there and show you how it works. The images can be manipulated in a variety of ways to make them clearer, to make objects jump out at you so that you can identify them. And, and then we can deal with them in a, you know, in a manner that, depending upon what it is we find, deal with them in a manner that promotes the safety of everybody, including the individual being scanned. All protocols and safeguards regarding radiation and so forth that are associated with are implemented and followed. There are daily and annual limits that someone can be exposed to radiation. And the scanners themselves actually police that by telling you, this person's, you can't scan this person anymore today, or this, or we have to decrease the dose, the strength of the scan because this person's approaching an annual limit if they've been scanned frequently. I don't anticipate that that will happen very often, if ever, because it actually, you absorb more radiation in a, flying in an airplane than you do from these scans. So, it is a very small amount of radiation. But nonetheless, we do have standards and protocols that we need to follow, and we will to assure that our staff who are operating the equipment and the individuals who are being scanned are safe. We purchased two of these scanners. One is in the pre-book area. So, that's an area where, when, it's kind of the in-between where law enforcement has arrived with an individual being arrested. They're not yet in our custody, is sort of the transition point between law enforcement custody and corrections custody. They're inside the building, but they haven't crossed a threshold yet. We will now place a staff member, we've been placing a staff member out in that area anyway to do COVID screening. So, we will now use that person additionally to operate the scanner. And so, an individual will come in, law enforcement will bring them in this time of year, remove their coats, empty their pockets, so forth. The person will go, go through the scanner. It's a conveyor belt. They are, the conveyor belt moves them through the scanner, takes about eight seconds, and then probably 30 seconds for the officer to interpret the images and decide whether there's anything that needs further investigation. So, it, we're very anxious and have been for a long time to have this technology available.
Good, that sounds great. And then you'd be using one in the building to be sure that something hasn't happened while?
Correct, for individual. If we have somebody who we think is a higher risk, who's gone out to court or gone out to an off-site medical appointment, we can scan them as well. Our trustees who work in the kitchen, there's, you know, there's time, we search them for utensils and things like, things that they shouldn't have tried to sneak out of the kitchen, so we can utilize the scanner for those purposes as well. What's really going to be an advantage is that this will pick up both metallic and non-metallic.
That's pretty amazing.
Items, which is not something we've had the capability of doing up till now.
Okay. Then I wanted to ask you, if I could, about GED. I know the rules have changed on them, and so we don't have so many accomplishing their GED, which bothers me a great deal. I'd like to figure out what we can do to get back to what was, because we had a lot more people that were getting their GEDs. And I just bring that up because we need to, I think, continually talk about what we can do to make it, make it better. Because I think there are a lot of groups that are operating in the community to try to help people move it back into the community after they've been incarcerated. And one of the tools is, of course, education and GEDs. Then I wanted to bring up bail. Then I wanted to bring up bail and I don't expect any answer today. But I'm still concerned very much about bail, people who are incarcerated because they simply can't make bail. It's all financial and it really does a lot of damage to whatever kind of a family they have, whoever they're responsible for. And so, I'd like to begin with particularly Commissioner Borgerson has worked on it quite a bit, talking about bail and other commissioners too. So, maybe we'll set up some other meetings to talk about that.
Commissioner, we just actually kicked off and I didn't include it in this report because it happened in November. We did the formal kickoff to a process where we're engaging our local criminal justice stakeholders in implementing a new pre-trial system altogether from a risk... A new and what I believe better and more informative risk assessment and pairing that with the development of services and supervision tools that we can use to match with the risk that individuals present. And that is not, you know, designed to replace cash bail but it is designed as to give judges choices besides cash bail that they can use to assure that people are safe and that community is safe and that we don't do unnecessary damage to people's livelihoods and so forth that we maybe could have worked through with, you know, GPS monitors and drug and alcohol, you know, monitoring and maybe having a social worker involved with them. You know, we can keep their life moving forward in the positive ways that they already have and not have everything grind to a halt with all of the consequences that that brings to it. So, that process, it's a year-long project and it kicked off just a couple of weeks ago. And we have good support. We have judges from county and district court, law enforcement, you know, from OPD and the Douglas County Sheriff's Department, representatives from the county attorney's office, city prosecutor, public defender, and corrections, all working together to develop this. And then separately, we are still... There is a bail fund, a research project on bail funds that we were selected as the second site for that Harvard is actually doing. They're doing San Antonio and Omaha. And that'll be... They want to study the impact of how people do, people of similar backgrounds, similar offenses, similar histories, how people do when they're not incarcerated pre-trial compared to being incarcerated pre-trial and see what the outcomes are. Because we really have to ask ourselves, are we really making the community safer by incarcerating people pre-trial if we just set them up to be that much more in a desperate situation a few months down the line?
Right.
So, we... Your point, your question is well-timed and we do have quite a bit of things that we hope to develop in the coming months.
All right. That'll be great. We'll figure out some way to communicate with COVID.
Yes, absolutely.
In place and get all this information. I really appreciate it, Mike. And again, you're doing... You and your staff are doing a terrific job and Mary Ann has arranged all that food we talked about.
Perfect.
Thanks a lot, Mike.
Further questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for this. I have a copy. I guess... I don't know if it didn't come with tabs this time but I'm looking for the... Two things. I found the authorized and on-hand page and the pages don't seem to be numbered either but it looks like we've made significant progress in beefing up the on-hand personnel there to overall ninety-two point nine percent of the authorized four hundred and seventy-six. You're at four forty-two. Kudos on that. What would you ascribe the increase in our ability to staff corrections to?
A couple of things. One, we've made the... We've made some improvements to training. We've made some improvements to, I think, recruiting and our hiring process. We overhauled from the ground up to make that much more efficient. We had some bottlenecks that slowed things down that we've overcome, involved a lot more people in the process, which has made it much more efficient. And, you know... And we are trying to instill... You know, corrections is a tough job. It's a tough profession to last in. And, you know, some of the things... We have a lot of goals in terms of trying to counterbalance that for our staff and we're not there yet. We're not any... And because this year has unfolded how it has, we haven't made some of the progress that I would have hoped in that sort of staff wellness and development, you know, just because we've been so consumed with responding to the pandemic and civil unrest and other issues that we've had to deal with. But we have that... I do believe that our focus on our newer staff is paying dividends in terms of them staying longer and more of them making a career of it so far. We still need to do better than what we're doing. But between retaining a little bit better and getting quite a bit better in the hiring process, I think those are the reasons we've made the gains that we have.
Well, kudos on that. And I think that that's... You know, if you follow the graph that you have there, you know, shows steady improvement since nineteen nineteen. And in this time of COVID pandemic, that's really a remarkable accomplishment. So, thanks for that. The other thing, and again, I don't have a page number here, but it's the racial demographics that...
My apologies for... I didn't realize... I believe forty of forty-nine. And we did... I did have our admissions manager adds a couple of different graphs to make them a little more... I didn't take out any of the old ones but I added some ones that I felt were a little more...
No, definitely. You know, an improvement and thanks for that. It does indicate the current population to be about sixty-five percent minority population in the correction center overall. And we've talked about this in the past. It doesn't seem to change much. It would be helpful in these reports, and we get these from the youth center, if we could see a historical overview. Go back and tell us, you know, what's the percentage going back? I don't know how long you've been keeping these demographic records but it would help us benchmark whether or not we're seeing any move whatsoever in the minority-majority population that seems to be chronic in our correction system and our youth center population. So, if that could be possible. But am I right? It doesn't seem to have moved from the sixty-five percent minority-majority in our correction center population.
Unfortunately, Commissioner, I think you're correct and I haven't seen a lot of movement in that. And we do have this data going back for years and years. So, I will, for the next report, have our admissions manager present something graphically so that you can see kind of over the course of time if there has been any changes because I can't tell you assuredly that there has or hasn't been. My anecdotal observation is that these dynamics have remained pretty stable.
And, you know, we all recognize you have no control over this. You take who comes to you. And so, it's not your doing that there's a sixty-five percent minority-majority chronic majority-minority population in our correction center. That's not you. That's the system. But I appreciate that. One thing that might go with that is on our staffing. What's the racial demographic of our staff? And if you could maybe break that up for us next time, that'd be helpful as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Further, Commissioner Boyle.
One thing I want to mention that's related to that, that doesn't have anything to do with corrections, but yesterday I received a phone call from a friend of mine from way, way back who's a black contractor and who pointed out that he hasn't seen any employment of black people, and this has nothing to do with you, Mike, on the mall, which is by the city and also by Douglas County and the Building Commission on the Juvenile Justice Courthouse site and just didn't see any black contractors and wondered what's going on. So, I talked to Paul Cohen at the Building Commission. Then I talked to Bruce Carpenter at HDR. He called me and they're going to have a... They had a meeting this morning with Key with the contractor about bringing some black contractors in. And to me, that is a real key to the problem. When we have more black men in jail, it means we don't have black men at work. And that's what needs to be acknowledged and we need to pay attention to it. And that's a responsibility of all of us in government positions to try to turn this around so that black people, black men particularly, but women as well, are employed and that stops a lot of this, the need for what takes place that makes them end up in corrections. So... And Commissioner Borgerson was working on that and she's done some things to lead us, the county board, in opening up our employment opportunities. So, we need to pay attention to that really, really a lot because that will help drive down the population, I think, not immediately but over time. So, I just wanted to get that out.
Thank you. Anything else for the Board of Corrections for our director? We do not have need that I am aware of for executive session. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Have a good Thanksgiving, Mike.
I will. Thank you, Mike. I will declare that adjourned and we will now convene as the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Borgerson? Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Kraft is present virtually but cannot vote. Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Mr. Chair?
Present. Thank you. Item one A, Minutes and Claims, approval of the minutes from the Commissioners' meeting held November tenth. Item B is approval of claims for payment through Tuesday, December one. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Borgerson to approve Items one A and B. Are there questions or comments to either of these? If not, Commissioner Morgan will be abstaining. One of the checks is to his company. Could we please vote?
Motion passes. Commissioner Morgan abstaining. All other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. This brings us then to the consent agenda. We have a pretty long consent agenda. We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Boyle to approve the consent agenda. You will find Items A through K on there and many of those have as many as thirteen subdivisions. Pretty lengthy list. Questions or comments, any items anybody would like pulled out for individual attention or discussion? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I just have some informational questions on a number of items. Item E, which is a resolution approving consulting agreement to touchstone strategic consultants for services of Dr. Ralph Lassiter to facilitate diversity, inclusion, and equity committee and to conduct an employee survey not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Is this general funds? Mr. Lorenz possibly could address this? Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes, Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator. Yes, it comes out of the general funds. We have a contract and fees line in our general fund.
Okay. We don't supply funding... I'm not aware of funding supplied to any other standing committee of the county board. And we have a HR department that would seem to me to be in the business of conducting surveys with our employees. Why are we outsourcing and spending ten thousand dollars of general funds on this?
We wanted to find somebody who really specialized in the kind of facilitation of committees such as this. It's also, from my perspective, I wanted to see if we could find somebody of color who would be able to facilitate, who had the kind of experience that we're looking for and Dr. Lassiter is African-American who has years and years of experience in leadership and facilitation of these kind of groups. So, we just felt, I felt, it was the perfect fit.
Okay. Well, I'm aware of African-Americans on our staff in the HR department. Is there some reason that HR can't...
We don't have any African-Americans on our staff in the HR department.
There are no African-Americans in the HR department?
No. Not... Certainly not up on fifth floor. I don't know that we have any over at HR but nobody that would have the type of experience that we need to do this.
Well, that might lead to some difficulties in securing minority participation in our employee base. I thought that at one time we had minority representation in our HR department but I'm, I guess, informed otherwise. Is that right? There are no minorities in the HR department?
You need to work on it, Jim.
I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm very sorry. I didn't get the floor either. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyle.
Okay. I was just saying what I talked about a little bit earlier. We all need to get more focused on that and that's what Commissioner Borgerson has talked about with our personnel rules. We need to be more accepting of people who've made mistakes and get them into the workforce. And so, that's... You're exactly right. And, you know, I don't think we're just as aware of it and we're just as much responsible as others. So, we need to get on the ball on this stuff, some of it.
Then we have a series of... Thank you for that. We have a series of requests for CARES funding but I looked at this and it doesn't appear that we have amounts with this. I'm not asking that we stop and do that because some of these seem to be accounted for later on but it would be helpful going forward, Mr. Lorenz, if when we're doing resolutions approving sub-grant agreements for various, looks like mostly volunteer fire departments, if the amendment... If the resolution for purposes of the public's edification, if nothing else, could contain the dollar amounts. Yes, I'm sorry?
Tracy, County Attorney's Office. The dollar amount, I believe, in... Our office doesn't generally do agenda items or resolutions. That's usually left to the department or just FYI, so we didn't prepare those. But if you're looking for the dollar amounts for those sub-award agreements that are on the consent agenda under, I think it's perhaps G, those are... Those dollar amounts are in the SOWs, which are the statement of work. Those are attached to the agreements themselves, just FYI, Commissioner.
I appreciate that. It might be helpful just to have them on the face of the agenda so that people can easily access that and understand what we're talking about. I just point that out. Then... I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Further questions or comments, anything on the consent agenda? All right? If not, I would ask for a vote on the consent agenda. Oh, shoot. I didn't notice Paca's on here. I need to resend my vote and abstain. I am sorry. I did not notice there's a sub-award agreement with Paca Hills on here. I need to abstain and I apologize for that.
Yeah, we'll let the record reflect that Commissioner Duda voted no.
Abstain.
Or abstain, excuse me. Abstained. Commissioner Duda abstained. All other commissioners voting yes. Motion passes.
Thank you for that. Okay. That gets us a long ways through the agenda. Next, we have recognition and proclamations. The first coming from Commissioners Kavanaugh, Boyle, and Kraft is a resolution recognizing the Anti-Defamation League Plain State Region's first annual walk against hate. Would any of the sponsors care to address this?
The Anti-Defamation League has instituted what is going to be an annual walk against hate and in the backup documents, you'll see a write-up on the Anti-Defamation League aims to bring community together with a walk against hate, which notes that earlier this year when the Anti-Defamation League Plain State Region decided to bring ADL's Annual Walk of Hate to Omaha, the world was in a very different place. A physical walk with hundreds of allies in one place is now no longer an... walk with hundreds of allies in one place is now no longer an option. Yet, rather than throw in the towel and wait for a better tomorrow, ADL gathered together collaborative, collaborators, and creative partners and got to work, the hope of bringing community members together citywide will still, was still the goal, but doing so safely and meaningfully was a challenge to solution, bringing the city to the people. And they were able to do the walk on a virtual basis and it commemorated various historical sites in the metropolitan area where our community struggled with hatred, including this site, where, as we all know, in 1919, there was a race riot and lynching of a black man. So, on Sunday, November 22nd, that took place. And in commemoration of that, we are, I think, proud to have a resolution that reads as follows. Whereas, as one of Omaha's leading anti-bias and anti-hate organizations, the Anti-Defamation League mission is to secure justice and fair treatment for all. And whereas, on Sunday, November 22nd, 2020, the ADL Plain State Region will hold its first annual walk against hate to coincide with ADL's 10th Annual National Walk Against Hate. Whereas, the ADL has transformed the Walk Against Hate into a COVID-safe, interactive journey and educational opportunity. And whereas, leading up to the November 22nd Walk Against Hate, the ADL will unveil 24 local sites that reflect the historic diverse journey through which our civil rights and civil liberties have evolved in the Omaha metropolitan area. And whereas, people who have the opportunity to physically and virtually visit each of the sites and appreciate how the ground many of us walk on has memory and meaning. And whereas, Douglas County joins in this ADL initiative to support civil peace, justice, equality, and reconciliation in our society. And whereas, Douglas County supports the ADL in its opposition of prejudice and discrimination on the basis of race, creed, gender, lifestyle, or free expression. And whereas, Douglas County supports the ADL's Walk Against Hate and its goal to bring us together as a better, stronger, and more inclusive community, state, and nation. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby recognizes the ADL's First Annual Walk Against Hate and encourages the residents of Douglas County to participate in the Walk Against Hate on November 22nd, 2020. It's on today's agenda because originally it was scheduled for sometime back in October and due to various reasons had to be rescheduled. But it's going to occur again, hopefully, on an annual basis. And I look forward to commemorating that going forward. Now more than ever, I think we could all agree that our community needs to come together to combat hate, whether it's based on race, religion, or gender, lifestyle, or your free expression of your First Amendment constitutional rights. So, I appreciate this and I would ask my colleagues to please support this resolution commending ADL for sponsoring this community walk against hate.
And may I speak?
Commissioner Kraft.
Dan, would you please show that if I could vote, I would vote a very strong yes on this. I've been subjected to antisemitism throughout my life, including when I was in first grade, a neighbor saying I couldn't walk in front of their house. Hatred is a very real thing and it is taught, and is taught over and over again by means of propaganda, repetition, conspiracy. It, it's just something that we need as a community, a national and international community to overcome. So, please mark me as if I could vote, it'd be a very adamant yes. Thank you.
Dan asks yes. I can do that. Commissioner Kraft.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I, it's very difficult to follow, the mics, there we go. It's very difficult to follow Commissioner Kraft when he speaks so personally of the hatred he experienced as a young child. That's just, it's terrible, terrible experience. I can't imagine it. But I want to say that he's absolutely right, that hate begins at home. Hate begins with words. The Holocaust didn't start with trains packing people. It started with people treating people as subhuman. And it's, it is words that are communicated to others that degrade others. So, watch out for it. Don't let your children develop those kind of habits. And above all, clear your heart and don't speak those words that turn into hatred. Hatred really diminishes all of us and it is a very, very serious tragedy in our, our, our lives. So, thank you, Commissioner Kraft, for speaking. You were really eloquent. Thank you. And I certainly support this resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yes, I fully support this resolution. And in my home, we still to this day, well, we are not allowed to use that word in any context whatsoever because it is about words, but it's also about actions as well. And those words and actions start with us as leaders. And what we say and what we do, how we treat each other, how we treat the community, that starts with us. And my motto has always been, as a leader, may you always lead with your heart. And again, I think that this is very appropriate for us, again, to be taking a full support of this resolution and, again, hope that our words and actions are taken to heart. Thank you.
I don't think I'll have trouble getting a motion to approve this, but I would ask for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kavanaugh, second by Commissioner Rogers. Further questions or comments?
I would just like to commend ADL Pam Lonsky and Tippi Denenberg, who've kind of spearheaded this and brought this to our attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. May we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero and the minutes will reflect that Commissioner Kraft would have voted yes if you're present.
Thank you. Next, we have the recognition of, we've got two different county employees retiring. I'm going to start by asking if either of them are, they're, anybody representing them is present. Ah, great. Mr. Corbett?
Yes.
Very good. Come on down. This is, this is your moment. You've waited 22 years for this. Leonard Corbett will be retiring from the Douglas County Community Department of Corrections after 22 years of service.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your service. Any, any words of wisdom you'd like to impart us with?
Oh, yes, sir. I got a few. First off, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for the support through the years. I've been here 22 years. Through my 22 years as a United States Marine, I've impacted a lot of dirt, sand, few trees here and there. I was always able to get up, brush myself off, good to go. However, in a jail environment, everything's concrete and steel. So, when you get up, you just can't brush yourself off. So, with the codes, continuing officer assaults, it's took its years toll on myself. And this is why I'm leaving. I got, with Director Myers, you've got a man with unlimited growth potential, outstanding in every aspect. You've heard his breakdown this morning of everything going on in the facility. Officer safety is, he's definitely put it up front, even though everything's all for the inmates down there, which I hear continuous. And we see, he's actually working with the officers now. So, we have a director that, he's not sending my paycheck anymore, so he can spring freely. But with everything he's done for us, I leave, knowing that it's definitely a great improvement. And again, just listen to detailed report and everything this morning. It really breaks it down to everything that's going on. Body scanners, everything else that he's brought in, it's, it's an improvement all around. Makes it safer for us and keeps us off the news and front lines. Now for a few quick war stories. One of the things with Douglas County, whenever Commissioners go for reelection and they go through the FOP board, I was on the board for many years. Commissioner Borgerson, my wife and I, 01:30 in the morning, out pounding signs. We get off on sea shift at 2300. We were, I had just met her. We had unlimited people that were going out pounding signs when we got off shift. And I learned she could swing a hammer pretty good, so I maintained what I said. And through the years, things went from there. As a CO1, Sergeant Wilson and I were at the hospital for a couple officers that were, were there for a couple injuries. And I seen a guy in a suit with the FOP president, him and his wife walking around. In fact, three different times through the ranks, I've seen him there. And never knew who he was. I see out of politics. And Sergeant Wilson commented, that was the Cougar. I'm thinking, Cougar? Who's Cougar? Then I found out it's Commissioner Boyle. After I seen him in action, it was more as a grizzly vise a Cougar, but, you know, I've seen, seen him good. Commissioner Boyle, I want to thank you especially, and through the years, when I was on the FOP board, all the conferences I've been to in the Omaha area, anything to do with law enforcement, you're a strong concrete pillar behind us in every aspect. And I thank you. Everybody, when something happens, everybody, who was the first, first person they want to call? Law enforcement. But everybody wants the cuts and everything else, but they don't realize it's a two-edged sword. So, with law enforcement, corrections, everybody out there, we got a job to do. And we do appreciate all of your support. And again, all the years, every conference we've had here, I've always seen you there. I know behind the scenes, others have been there as well. But I just want to thank each and every one of you. This is my chance to say it. We see it down there. We talk amongst ourselves in corrections. But I got the floor and I just want to personally say thank you for each and one of you. Thank you, Director Myers, for everything. I've just got a couple days left in the county and I'm off on my own and we go from there. But again, thank you for everything.
We do have, yeah, I don't know how, we can't really shake hands. First, let's see if we approve the resolution.
A motion to approve.
And I will second Commissioner Boyle's motion. Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, I want to thank you for your dedication and service for all these years. And you're right, it's a hard job.
Yes.
And we are glad to be able to give you the tools to make it a little easier, but we aren't there every day. And you were. And we appreciate what you've done and your steadfast leadership over there. So, thank you for your dedication and all you've done for Douglas County and for the Department of Corrections. You will be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Mary Ann said it so well. And, you know, the men and women at the Department of Corrections make the place work 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And it's, I cannot imagine the work that you're doing. And so, it was always my pleasure to be supportive of the work that you do and that law enforcement does as well. So, I congratulate you on surviving these many years. And it looks like you have, probably, I have a feeling you had a lot of fun while you were working there too. So, that's good.
Every day.
Every day, okay.
Every day. It's always a fine day in the county down there.
That's great. When we get through with passing this, we'll come around and bump elbows with you, okay?
I might let you. I think in light of the pandemic, most of us are going to kind of stay put, pretty much.
Are you? Okay. Well, I'd like to bump an elbow with you.
All right. And, and the one, the one thing I note, first off, thank you so much for your, for your many years of service at a, at a great place, your kind words about Mr. Myers that I wholeheartedly agree with. The note I want to make here is, on your way out, you can kind of say whatever you want.
Yes, I can. But it's all positive.
I'll be following you real soon.
Yes, sir. It's all positive. You know, every job, everything you do, you got ups and downs. It's more positive down there. The team of officers, one thing I can reflect on, if you've ever seen any shootings, mass shootings, everybody's running away. But who's running towards the shooting?
Yeah.
Your law enforcement. First time I was in a code down there, you know, as a Marine, anytime the shooting starts, you're, you're going towards it. And down there, my first week down in a code, I couldn't believe, everybody's running towards because it was an officer in need. But as everybody gets up there, the teamwork, the camaraderie, you know, and that's, that's what really made it worthwhile going in. So, more positive than negative. Yeah, I had to come up to the Civil Service Board once or twice, but overall, it was good. Life's learning experiences.
Very good. All right. I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote on this, if we could, please. Mr. Ash?
Thank you, sir.
Motion passes six to zero.
And Dan does have a certificate for you to show, well, Mr. Corbett.
On the bump your elbow, okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Thank you so much.
Do you think I could get a picture of having everybody here in the background?
Yeah, let's do it.
Sure.
Okay, no, you can, I think staying here, you guys, yeah, you can stay right here.
Oh, all right.
That way, it works, works good for everybody. They'll be all right.
Fine, fine. Absolutely, Mr. Corbett.
Do you want your family there?
Yes, ma'am. And my son as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, sir. Director Myers? You too, sir.
Hey, you're ordering them around. That's good.
Requested.
I liked it. Requested, yes.
This one's Lucas. It's my wife, Peggy, wanted a hammer.
Welcome.
How about you folks? Do you have cameras? Want somebody to use?
She's got one there, sir.
All right, good. Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We really made our day, Leonard. Thank you for serving us.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Next on the agenda, another retiring employee, Deanna Strosser. Is Deanna present? Retiring from 20, from the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center after 20 years of service. Would entertain a motion, motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Boyle, to approve item 3C, recognizing Deanna Strosser. Could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
And, Mr. Chair, if I could have a moment, personal privilege?
The floor is yours, Commissioner Kraft.
Thank you. It is very impressive how many employees we have that have served 20-plus years. It shows the dedication of the employees, the good working environment we have, and the great managerial staffs we have. And I just want to thank all of our employees, current and past, and all of our managers for creating such a wonderful environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Good words. Appreciate it. Okay. Item D is a resolution recognizing, did we vote on C?
Yes.
Okay. Item D is a resolution recognizing the life of Alfred Martinez, Sr., a decorated veteran of the US Navy, Omaha's first Latino police officer, and a community activist for nearly 50 years, coming from Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I want to say, first of all, this is kind of a labor of love. I've known Al Martinez, Sr., and the Martinez family all of my life. Growing up in South Omaha, they are recognized as one of the premier families of South Omaha. And I know that there are family members here today, and I would ask them maybe to come down. John, would you join us? Al's son, John, who also carries on the family tradition, law enforcement, serves on the Omaha Police Department. And John, if you could introduce your...
I'm with my sister, Lila. She is the eldest of the siblings. She's also known as the boss.
Thank you for joining us today. And condolences from all of us to you and your family on your father's recent passing. He was a great man. And it's really a labor of love that we come together today with this recognition and proclamation in his honor. And I know that your mother's not able to join us, but I believe she's on the Zoom and your brothers as well. So, we would just like to say to the entire Martinez family, your father was a gift to this community and to... And to me personally, when I was a young attorney in the courthouse and your dad worked at the courthouse municipal courts, he was a mentor to me and couldn't have been kinder. And I learned a lot from him about dignity, honesty, and public service. And he was a guy who didn't tell you things, but he led by example. If you watched Al and learned what he did, you did the right thing. I know that he was extremely proud of all of you. He talked about you a lot. And I think that the family is the greatest mark of a person's accomplishments in this life. And your family stands as an example to both your mother and father for lives well-led. And the contribution that the Martinez family, led by Al Senior, have made to this community are incalculable. He also worked for Douglas County for a period of time after his distinguished career at the Omaha Police Department. And I want to recognize that because he was an investigator with the county attorney's office. And I remember that because he was, again, contributing, although he was retired, to the well-being of our entire community. He never quit, really. His entire life is an example of service. So I'd just like to read, if I could, the proclamation, which goes as follows. Board of Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska. Whereas Mr. Alfred Martinez Senior was born to Mexican immigrant parents on October twenty-fifth, nineteen thirty-one, in Omaha, Nebraska. And whereas his passion for service became evident when he was young as he enlisted in the U.S. Navy at just seventeen years of age. And whereas Mr. Martinez married his childhood sweetheart, Mrs. Dolores Martinez, in nineteen fifty and had five children. And whereas a veteran of the Korean War, Mr. Martinez had a decorated military career. And whereas in nineteen fifty-six, Mr. Martinez was the first Latino ever hired by the Omaha Police Department, serving as an officer for thirty-three years before retiring in nineteen eighty-nine. And whereas Mr. Martinez was Nebraska's inaugural Hispanic Man of the Year, chosen by a state agency when it started the annual tribute in nineteen eighty-five. And whereas Mr. Martinez truly had a heart for helping others, giving countless hours and years of his time as a volunteer in the South Omaha community where he grew up. And whereas Mr. Martinez was a baseball and basketball coach, a volunteer for the Special Olympics, a parish leader for Our Lady of Guadalupe Catholic Church, and a six-time commander for the American GI Forum Omaha Chapter, a Hispanic veterans and civil rights organization. And whereas in twenty eighteen, Mr. Martinez was honored with a lifetime achievement award from the Omaha Police Department. And whereas Mr. Martinez was eighty-nine years old when he passed on November ninth, twenty twenty, a Parkinson's disease complicated by COVID- nineteen. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board honors the life of Mr. Alfred Martinez Senior for his longtime public service, extraordinary leadership, and astounding commitment to the Douglas County community for more than fifty years, dated this twenty-fourth of November, twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion in the second. Further comments? Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I think Commissioner Kavanaugh already covered it all. And it's, I had the pleasure of working with your father when he was an officer and we talked about bringing more Latinos and Latinas into the police force. And he was not so much Latinos, I think it was most Latinos, but anyway, bringing more onto the force and to recognizing the diversity in our community. And your father, from, I think, from the first day he started walking the beat down in South Omaha to the day that he died, was always out front pushing for fairness and equality. And he really accomplished an awful lot. You only need to look at the Martinez and the Gonzalez families and all the other Mexican-Americans and other Latinas that are on the force. So it really, really does my heart warm. And Jim and I talked about this and he asked me to be a co-sponsor and that didn't make the list, but that's okay. My heart is with you. And when I go down to the GI Forum, that's who I saw always, Lila and family and Michael and your mom and dad. So it'll always be a warm spot for me, just like my wife, who used to enjoy their company as well. So I am very, very pleased to see you here today. You're really, I told your dad, we talked and laughed and stuff and he told me, he says, you know, you're my Irish nephew. What a great honor. So anyway, I really am so pleased that you're here today. And my condolences on what a terrific loss it is. He was just a cornerstone of the community. And we will remember him for what he did and what he is still doing for us. So thank you for being here today. And Jim, thanks a lot, you did a great job on that resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers.
If I, if I could, just briefly, out of care and concern for my mother, other siblings, my mother Dolores and my brothers, Al Junior, Mark and Mike are viewing in on television or Zoom. But was able to have my sister be here today. And on behalf of the entire Martinez family, thirty-six grandchildren and great-grandchildren who are somewhere watching also, we thank all of you commissioners for our father's recognition. He truly loved the city of Omaha. He loved serving, especially in South Omaha where he was, where he grew up and where he raised his family. And boy, you didn't have to ask him. If he knew there was a need, he just jumped on board. Didn't have to be asked. And I could give you countless stories of his service through the Omaha Police Department and in the community. However, we'd be here all day. We'd have to serve lunch and probably dinner. But we thank you so very much for the recognition of our father. We will miss him greatly, but he lives on in his children and grandchildren. And we love you, Dad. Thank you so very much.
It's an amazing legacy, however, we're not quite done yet. Commissioner Rogers.
No, and I just want to express my condolences. I had the pleasure of working with Al the four years I was in the mayor's office. And he was security for Mayor Fahy. You said a lot that I was going to add. I just, he was a great man, you can feel it in his spirit every time you were around him. So my condolences to the family.
I got to know him best when he was driving the mayors around. And all the big shots would go up to have meetings and the rest of us would hang back and talk. And man, what a great guy. I really was very fond of him. He's a most impressive legacy. You should indeed be very proud. Commissioner Borgeson.
Again, very sorry for your loss. And I didn't know your dad personally. I knew who he was, of course, from his name and his duties. And my grandpa was an Omaha cop and walked the South Omaha beat. So it takes a special person to walk that beat in my heart. So again, I'm very sorry for your loss. And our hearts go out to you, but he will always be in your heart as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank, could we go ahead and vote on the?
There is a motion in second, so yes.
Yes, I would call for the vote, please. Hope it passes. Indeed.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right.
Thank you.
If you want to stand up here, we'll. Usually we get a little tighter for these pictures than we are today, for obvious reasons. Well, always nice to have something positive and uplifting like that. Citizens' comments. Would anybody like to address the county board of commissioners on any item not on the agenda? If so, this is your opportunity to do so. Oh, Commissioner. Did you wish to speak, Mark?
Yes, I did.
Was this on?
Can you hear me?
Was this on Officer Martinez?
Yes.
Larry?
I do.
I'm going to ask you to wait just a minute so Mark can say this first, please. Go ahead, Mark.
I would have loved to be a sponsor on that also. I think all of us would. And it's, you know, he was a man. I don't think he ever said a bad word about anybody. At least I never heard it, and I've known him all my life also. And I'm older, I hate to admit it, I'm older than Jim Kavanaugh. But it's also, yeah, I know. And I wish I could be there to sign the.
The resolution?
Resolution, thank you. The, it's nice that this is on the same day as the Walk Against Hate. Because this is a loving man who I don't think ever taught any hate. And I would have voted strongly for this, just like I did, about the Walk Against Hate. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Craft, appreciate it. Okay, now we will move to citizen comments. Larry, the floor is now yours.
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I'd like to suggest that in preparation for next year, that we reconsider some things for changes. I've attempted to bring the rules up to debate or request to be on the agenda about that and been denied. But I do still believe that some of those things need to be done because I don't think a citizen really gets much input, doesn't get to say much and doesn't get to hear much back and forth. That needs to change somewhat. But today, basically, I have three quick items that I want to refer to. All three are, can be found in the Omaha World-Herald. The first one is yesterday in regards to crime statistics. And of course, the constant drum of racial disparities. But I'd like to point out that if you look at that article and, and the curve, the statistics, the red lines and the percentages, and you think about it, your first reading, common sense would say, there's something wrong with this picture. What they're not saying is, here is that maybe the percentage of black people arrested is because there's more crimes committed by black people. More black people are committing crimes. That's just a very simple look at that article. It's not necessarily true, but neither are the statistics behind it. For example, Douglas County is rated at twelve point five percent. Johnson County only point three five percent. But wow. Saunders County, thirty-five point fifteen percent or one percent? Excuse me. That kind of points a picture that, goodness sakes, somebody better do something about Saunders County and applaud Jefferson County. But maybe it's because the population of blacks is lower in some counties and higher in others. Statistics don't necessarily tell you the whole truth. Second one is Article September nineteenth regarding radical teaching on race. Now, I don't know how much you read about these things, but we hear about them all the time in these chambers, both at this body and at the city council. And it has to do with critical race theory, which is a national progressive agenda, to blame me, to blame white people. And it's hateful, but we don't hear that from anybody, do we? Well, we did hear it from the president. And he has a new agenda and a proclamation, or executive order, to try and undo the lies about the sixteen nineteen project, the New York Times, to say that this country was founded in sixteen nineteen when the first slave, first slave from Africa supposedly debarked on a ship before the Mayflower got here. And that was when our country was founded and we were founded on racist principles. Absolutely untrue lie. And it is a Marxist agenda. You can look that up. And the last one is in February of twenty and in December of nineteen. Article is about the Muslim faith. December twenty-first of nineteen, from the pulpit article by the Imam Muhammad Jamal Daoudi. Our country was definitely founded on Christian principles. If you read that particular opinion piece by that person, you get the impression that he's relegating the Christian religion below everything else and relegating Jesus Christ down below everything else, that we're basically related to Abraham? Well, although they say we all worship the same God, that's not necessarily true. Not according to our religion. There are some people that say Muslim religion is not a religion, it is a political system. And I believe that's probably true. If you're a true Christian, you would have to believe that we don't worship the same God.
I'm going to ask if you can bring these to a conclusion, please.
All right, that's it.
All right, thank you, Larry.
Those things need a discussion, not just a proclamation or a resolution from up there. And I'd like to end that with, and I'll probably say it again this afternoon. Mr. Ben Gray keeps saying we will have that discussion, but we never do. It's always one way from there to here.
Your five minutes are up now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Is there anybody else that would like to address this board during citizen comments? Okay, if not, we will move on to presentations. The first is Douglas County Care Rental Assistance Update. Melissa, Ms. Seawick.
Do you want to do? Good morning, Melissa Seawick with General Assistance. This is going to be the end of November update for the Douglas County Care Rental Assistance Program. Just a reminder that the Douglas County Care Rental Assistance Program is set to assist with low-to-moderate income households with rent and the maximum benefit now is seven thousand dollars and the need must be due to COVID- nineteen. We have received just under fifty-five hundred valid applications. We have processed just under four thousand applications. Seven hundred and one we are currently in process of. And there are eight hundred applications that we are currently waiting landlord response. That's about fourteen percent, which has been much lower than it has been in the previous months. And again, that some of those applications are just duplicate submissions where there was the wrong landlord information and the applicant has since reapplied. And we send out weekly reminders to people to, that their landlord has not submitted the application and how to go about doing so. And if they did by chance submit the wrong email address, how to go about doing that. So for our approvals up until now, we have two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight applications that have been approved and just under sixty. and just under $6 million. As of this morning, we have hit the $6 million mark. We have assisted over 3,000 adults and just under 3,500 children in the Douglas County area have been served by this program. We have just over 1,500 applications that have been denied. Again, those are not unique applications, and about 50% of those have since remained denied after reapplying for assistance. The vast majority of those have been denied for insufficient documentation and/or unable to verify financial hardship. About 3% is over the 100% AMI and just under 14%. They've submitted everything that they needed to, but we did not see that there was a financial hardship due to COVID-19. So this is a breakdown of the average rental assistance that we have authorized. So on the left, you're gonna see the average amount awarded per household each month. And then on the right, it's going to be the average weekly payment that we have sent out throughout the entire department. So our average per household has kind of remained steady over the last three months. Probably about just over $3,600 per household. And then as far as the average weekly payment, that's kind of, we had a peak in October, but since then, it's pretty much remained steady. So based on what we're seeing and we have been seeing, and when this program will close, we are estimating, again, that we'll spend about 75 to 80% of the funds. And with that, we're seeing a lot more of the newer applications where the folks are just asking for November and December. We're not seeing multiple months. And we kind of guessed that would happen just based on people were on unemployment. Some of the employment has exhausted and now people are needing assistance. And then this is just the breakdown as far as where the applications are coming from that we've processed and that are in process. Again, those zip codes have been pretty steady, 68104, 68111, 68134. And again, there's the map of that, of those locations. And again, as far as the approvals and denials, those have been pretty steady throughout the zip codes. This is our closeout plan for the program. As you guys are all aware, all of the funds have to be exhausted by December 31st of 2020. So this is kind of the plan that we have had. This is noting that rent is going to be due by the 5th of the month. We are looking at December, not January. So our thought is that, you know, people should know by now if they're gonna need rental assistance for December. That said, we're doing an application cutoff for the tenants. Those are gonna close down on Sunday, December 13th at 11:59. Then as far as the landlord portal, that will close on December 20th at 11:59 PM. That will give us time to contact the applicants. Like I said before, there's probably about 90% of these applicants, we're having to either reach out to them or their landlord for additional information. So we want it to be fair in the sense that we're giving everybody time to respond back to us. So we're gonna use that time to try to contact the landlords, the tenants, and get as many applications processed by December 23rd. We would really like to have all of the payments go out, so then the payments would reflect on the December 29th board meeting. And then, but if we receive anything after that, we will absolutely process it. And our final closeout will be Thursday, December 31st because the funds just have to be allocated by that date. So that is our plan. We have posted it to our website. We are sending out mass emails to landlords, to renters notifying them of this if they have an application and submission or if there's stuff that we are still waiting for them, we are emailing them and letting them know. And we have it on our message machine as well. So we're trying to get this out to all of the organizations that we've been working with, really stressing it. Nobody really seems too concerned with the dates just because this is for December. We're not looking at January. Most of the folks have been applying for December assistance already. And then anybody who had already received assistance from us earlier on the year, if they needed assistance further, like in November, December, they just needed to request that and they have been doing that. So majority of our folks have already been paid up through December. And then just the help desk for the Douglas County Care Rental Program is 402-444-7232, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30. And then we have our website as well where there's a lot of frequently asked questions, an example of the application, and then to apply, and that's www.douglascounty-ne.gov. And we are doing applications onsite. Tiffany was working late last night to work with a family to get their application in. So we are doing a lot of those as well, trying to get everybody in within this timeframe.
Thank you. Commissioner Block.
Melissa, this looks real good. I have a question on page two, the very bottom item, denials. And it's 13.8, Unable to Verify Financial Hardship Due to COVID-19. Will you explain that? What does that mean?
I had a lady yesterday that was denied for that reason. This woman has been on unemployment. And she started unemployment in 2019 and has remained on unemployment. Her income hasn't changed at all. And she was receiving unemployment in California, has been in Nebraska for a couple months. So her income has been the same throughout that entire time. So that would be an example of unable to verify a financial hardship or if somebody has submitted all their financial information and there's been no changes at all, that they're making the same thing in January, February, March as they're making right now. They had no loss in income due to COVID-19.
So the standard, so the standard is that they don't have any loss of income?
Yes.
That's, that's really what that means?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's fine. I had a hard time looking at this map. I couldn't tell. What's, what's down in South Omaha next to 68107? What's the zip code down there?
There's 68117.
117?
Yes. There's 68127, 68117, 68107. And those, this has been emailed to you as well, so you can have it blown up.
What's that again?
This has been emailed to you all as well, so it's a little bit bigger.
Thanks a lot.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you. You mentioned that some of the landlords aren't responding, or is that a problem?
I don't think it's a problem. I think that the percentage that we have that shows the landlords being unresponsive, a lot of those are, people have already reapplied because they inserted the doc, the email address for the landlord incorrectly. I emailed probably about five different management companies yesterday, a list of folks that I still was showing that they needed to submit, if those people were still there, so they could go ahead and fill out the application for them. So I don't think that it's a big issue. And there's some that just aren't going to fill it out. And there's some people who have since already left the property, and that's why the landlord hasn't filled it out as well.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments for Melissa? Commissioner O'Leary.
Thank you. Thanks for this. I'm just comparing this to the last report that you submitted for the period up to, I believe, November 4th. Anyhow, there are slightly different formats for the exhibits in these. However, on the Rent Assistance Authorized portion of the November 4th one, it indicates a steady rise in authorized dollar amounts up through November. And then looking at the same kind of graphic on the November 23rd report, the one that you submitted today, it appears that there was a drop off of, I don't know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in authorized expenditures between October and November. Why is that?
I, this is the first time I've reported on the average weekly payment, so I think that it's, you're, the tables that you're comparing aren't the same. I don't have the report from November 4th in front of me, but I imagine by knowing the report, it is what we've been, we've spent total, and that obviously has continued to rise. And then this that I'm reporting was per your request as far as you wanted to know the average weekly payment that we had been spending each month. And so that's what this report reflects. And this is the first time that I've reported on that.
Okay, maybe I wasn't clear. On page three of the report you submitted today, in the Average Rent Assistance Authorized 7/27/2020, 11/23/2020, the second graph shows expenditures of $326,410,000, $541,000 for October, and then a drop off since October 3rd, it looks like, to $398,000. That's what I'm talking about. See that drop?
I do, but you're asking why it's different from my report from last time?
No, 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 I'm not. I'm asking, why is that less? Why is there a drop off?
Because the requests have been less. There's been maybe possibly less approvals. As I stated, that there are, a lot of the applications we're getting in now are for November, December. They're not April forward. We did a lot of payments in September, October that were April through September or April through even December. We're not seeing those. So if you look at our average amount awarded per household, that has also gone down. So if we're getting applications that we're not spending $7,000 on per household, that is going to change out the average weekly payment.
Okay. The amount to date is $5.9 million of the overall $10 million. And we've got less than a month to go. What's your estimate of how much of the $10 million will be authorized for rent assistance in 2020?
As I stated, it was, I'm anticipating 75 to 80% of the funds being spent based on what we have seen and based on our average spending this past month.
Okay. And the board has before it an emergency resolution for $150,000 worth of CARES funding for advertising by the Vic Gutman and Associates Group through the Health Department to advertise things that they've done or are going to do between now and the end of the year relative to the COVID-19 pandemic. How much has been expended on the Rent Assistance Program for advertising?
As far as the funds spent, I believe we are running an ad that will be in December in the Reader. Other than that, I don't believe that there's been any funds specific for the Rental Assistance Program, but it has been all over the news, all over the media, all over various social media posts. We're up here presenting. We are blasting our information away to various nonprofits, landlord associations. It's been out there. So I don't think that posting it in the Reader, you know, in the previous months, really, it would have been already, and that's the target market that we're seeing. So, but again, I think it's, December is the first time unless...
Yes, I have other questions. I'll wait till my next round.
Yeah, I'll just comment on that really quick. Patrick Glimm, County Administrator. Right, I was not in the room. I apologize. I had to take a phone call on this very issue, by the way. So there will be an ad in the Reader on December 3rd at Commissioner Kavanaugh's request. It'll be an ad for rental assistance primarily. We will have something in there about utility assistance. We've been having a difficult time with getting the information we need in the format that we need to put it in, but we will have something in there as well. It'll be just, it'll be a full-page ad. We got an incredible discount on it, so it's really, relatively speaking, wasn't very expensive. And, and that's it. That's all I can...
No, I appreciate that, Patrick. And, you know, my, my question, I guess, would be, we're being asked to spend $150,000 on Vic Gutman Associates for a period between now and December 20th for the Health Department's promotion. And we've spent, I don't know what the Reader ad is, but that's it, for the entire Rental Assistance Program. It seemed to me, this is just an observation, that we might want to promote this at least on the same level that we're promoting whatever the Health Department wants to do with Vic Gutman and Associates, so that people can get rent assistance between now and the end of the year.
I think, Commissioner, that...
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing you.
As, as Melissa stated, it's out there. People are aware of it. Landlords are aware of it. Rental is aware of it. It's been on KTV, it's been on WWT. It's, it's, it's out there. So really, to me, it's up to the county board if they want to do additional advertising. I don't think it's necessary, and I think Melissa will agree with that, but it's really up to the board if you want to do that. The $150,000 for the education on the upcoming vaccines, I think, is a little bit of a different ballgame. I think it's a much bigger ballgame. So, but again, we'll do whatever the board wants to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgerson.
How much was that ad, Patrick?
It was $940.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, I've said this before and I'll, I'll repeat myself because I think our staff has done a spectacular job with this program. We put it, they put it together very timely. We got the word out. I think some of the things, two things besides the one I always say, and that is, this being COVID-related, I think is why we're, we're not seeing the numbers that were given to us at the beginning of this discussion. At the beginning of this discussion, they included every person within Douglas County that was rent burdened. And that was prior to COVID. And so I think that's one issue. The second issue is, there is a lot of money in this community for rent and mortgages assistance. And so I think with that, again, it's a pretty good chunk that we've been able to get out to people in need due to the COVID through our Rental Assistance Program. And I credit that to the staff that has worked this program. We can sit here and second guess and, you know, squawk all we want, but I'm telling you, looking at the numbers and looking at the work they've done, I think you've done a, a great, great job. I think now we take it, you know, to the rest, to the end of December. I like your plan that you have before us on how to do that. I mean, every, every nonprofit, every social media, I've posted it on social media gazillion times. And the news media has talked about it a lot, the radio. So I think we've gotten the word out, and I think we've done a very good job of doing that. And again, the credit goes to the staff for the work that they've done on this. So, you know, again, great job, and you've helped a lot of people, and we, we heard from some of those people and how thankful they are. And again, that should make you all feel very good and very proud of what you've done for us with this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to put this thing in perspective. I don't think the comparison of, if the board wants to do the spin, that's fine. I think at this point, I agree, there's notoriety, there's notoriety out there about the program. But comparing this to the Health Department's spin and the effort, just to add on what Patrick said, the spin with the Health Department is totally on a, on a different matter. It's not about a particular program. It's the general awareness overall. And some of it comes timely right now to combat the misinformation that's coming out there by anti-maskers, anti-vacciners about things. But also, it is just a continual effort of trying to get people on board with what they need to do for the long term. So comparing the spin that the Health Department is doing with that program spin is a totally different matter in the continual piece. And it's part of a bigger piece where there's contributions coming from radio stations, TV stations, about 50 media outlets around the state for a bigger campaign. So I just want to put that in perspective and in context for the public to think that there's some invalid or not worthy effort over here to some degree. The board wants to spin on that, that's fine, but I hear about the program. I've informed people about the program just like it's been said. And I don't know if, I don't know if an ad in the last week is gonna like shoot this thing up where you get $3 million worth of spin. That's, that's just not gonna happen. But with that, I want to thank the staff for their work and just note the fact that it's out there. You know, there's so much that we can do on it, and hopefully people come forward that need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Chris, kind of said it. I don't think we could have had a better group of people, Melissa, your leadership. on Melissa, your leadership, in responding to people, because I know I've called, and there's always someone to answer, and you're not going through this and that to connect with someone. And also, yourself calling people back has been unbelievable, and I've heard that before and had it myself. But, you know, I think you're doing it and have done a tremendous job, so we're fortunate to have your organization working on it. It's been really a good response to the citizens and very helpful, too. So thank you again.
I am so impressed with the job you have done. I've had probably a dozen constituents email me with question, problem, whatever. I always forward it to Melissa, and anytime, day or night, weekend, whatever, they have a response in a very timely fashion. I have been so impressed with how quickly you are responding to the community needs. Interesting experience. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Oh, I'm sorry, Mike. Commissioner Boyle.
Don't want to be redundant, but I really agree with what I've been hearing. I'm congratulating you on the work you've done and your staff. So I just want to take the time to say, I totally agree.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. The amount that we're spending on the Health Department is for the same period of time between now and the end of the year. Actually, it says it will lapse December 20th. So the idea that, oh, there's not enough time to do it, I guess applies differently to the Health Department's initiative and this important initiative, but I don't understand that, really. I think that renters in our community, leading up to the holidays, are as in greater need as anybody else. The difference is, I think that people want to give one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a particular ad agency, and that's not happening on rent assistance. But the paid media that is going into the Health Department's thing is different than the public media that the Health Department's already gotten. Weekly news conferences, at least, by the Health Department, every radio station, every print outlet, every media entity in the community has carried the Health Department's message. Hasn't been the same with the General Assistance, although you've done, you know, a good job, and I'm not criticizing you at all. I'm just saying, it should be the same for our needy rent assistance applicants and our utilities assistance applicants as it is for whatever the Health Department is doing with the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Vic Gutman and Associates versus the nine hundred and forty dollars total spent on these assistance programs promotions in the media. The lapsed balance at the end of the year, presuming that we don't get to 100% of the 10 million dollars, should be considered as a pay-forward option for 2021, because on December 31st, rent assistance demand is going to not go down, but go up. And I received this from a local community organization that's working on rent assistance right now, in response to one of my colleagues saying there's plenty of resources out there. They say, "Community organizations are going to run out of CARES rental assistance money very soon, leaving the county as the only option. If we can't reduce the requirements, can we award the rest of the money to someone like MACCH to get it out quickly and efficiently, or lapse it into 2020," which we're going to do with a bunch of money, tens of millions of dollars of unexpended CARES money, which is going to be lapsed into the general fund, and run it through General Assistance's existing Rental Assistance Program. That's what's going to happen around the country with a lot of other entities using their CARES money, because the pandemic's not going to end on December 31st, and COVID-19 impacted people are actually going to spike after the holidays, not go down. So the demand is going to be greater, not less. I am anticipating that we should get ahead of the curve, talk about helping people through the pandemic, using these monies that were going to lapse anyhow into our general fund on December 31st to continue the assistance for renters and people in need of utilities assistance and others in the community. We should also look at going into the for-profit food, drink, entertainment, and hospitality industry, which have received almost no help in the CARES package so far. So thank you for what you've done. We're going to have another hearing on this before the window closes. I appreciate everything. And you have been very responsive. I have reached out to you, as well as others, with specific constituent requests, and you've always been very responsive to that. I commend you. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope this concludes today's discussion on the Rental Assistance Update. Is there more? Commissioner Rogers.
Yeah, I'm just at the point now where I just don't want to let this misinformation be unchallenged, because to imply that, you know, at least I'm going to speak for myself that the board has this less concern for renters is wrong. Things keep getting put out here misinformation-wise, and questions getting answered to kind of allude that the board and the department is not going to the full max in every way possible to be able to get this money out. You know, the thing is, COVID exacerbated this, and renters are going to always be in need. But again, to compare this, to take a shot at, you know, I don't know what the thing is with Vic Gutman and Associates. I'm not a close friend, but to take a shot at, to use an attack against public health to take a shot at them. Public health role is what it's always been. It's prevention. It's information. And this is at a heightening stage now. So I just feel like I need to knock down this piece of making it seem like if the board has a greater concern for, a lesser concern for renters. It does not, and the board has went every means that it can to make that, the money available, and will continue to do that to the best of their ability. The concern about money not being available to people post 30th, we should call our Congress people. You should call the Congress to make the money free and available. The county has done everything they could with that to some degree. And to bring the issue up with the bar owners, I mean, the state has made money available for that, and the state had a billion dollars to do something with that. So I think the ask is there, and the opportunity has been there to meet that need. How bar owners reach into the rental assistance piece, I don't know, but I just wanted to, I feel like I need to knock that down, being stated and going unanswered. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We're going to move on now to the...
Louis C. Manus, 3306 Burt Street. Been listening to the discussion, and I do want to partake, because I disagree with the snag evidently that we hit, because we could start with the approvals that this program has seen, which is 2,428, and that's something that is to be commended. But Commissioner Rogers, it's evident that one ad on rental assistance is not enough at this point. It could have been done prior. It could have been done in, you know, more than one. That is evident, and so I agree that the board can take a look at stuff like that and make a different decision. We're at this point, so we're going to wrap it up, close it up. You can be proud. I think there's things to be proud of, especially getting the money out. But hindsight, one ad in the Reader and said, "We did a good job." It's just not going to fly. I mean, that's not how Douglas County should be, you know, putting something at the end. There's different media, and I don't think that sharing from your personal profile is to be like, okay, we got this covered. There's marketing tools in social medias that can be tapped into. That, I think, is more of a thing to consider than if people are sharing it on their profiles. So I'm kind of listening at this discussion, and I want to say that because I agree with Commissioner Kavanaugh, that when the board is going to, you know, address something, said, "We approve of this," you can still be proud of something and then critique. And I think that's, this is appropriate critique, that one ad is not enough. You can, we have questions about where the money's going, you know, both the state and the county hire Deloitte, so maybe we should be asking Deloitte about, you know, how is the state doing compared to the county? I think that's a good question for Deloitte. And at this time, that the Rental Assistance Program and the CARE Act's funding is wrapping up. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. All right. Now, we are going to move on to the CARES Act update. We have six items on there. We are, as the discussion has already alluded to, I am going to be asking us to consider declaring an emergency to add a seventh item on here, and that would be a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar allocation of CARES Act funding for the Health Department, the coordinated campaign, the state and everything. All right. So we show six items here. When we get done with those, I will be asking us if we want to consider removing a commission. Okay. Okay. I will be asking for a seventh item to be added. Joe?
Okay, so we're going to do the CARES Act update and allocate some new money. Before we do that, though, I thought I'd update everyone. We just talked about rental assistance. I got new numbers last night on the Utility Assistance Program. So as of November 22nd, we have allocated a little over $2 million of the $4 million that we set aside. So we're a little above 50%, and Dollar Energy is estimating, that will be similar to the Rental Assistance Program, in that we will spend, they estimate a little over $3 million by the end of the day. So that would put us at that 75% to 80%, which is fairly consistent with the Rental Assistance Program. And we're also working with these folks at Dollar Energy to close this out, and this one is a little different than the Rental Assistance Program, because the Rental Assistance Program is being administered by the county, so all the money sits with the county, where is, the Utility Assistance Program is being administered by a third party. So we've set up some dates and arrangements where they would return what money they have unspent, would come back into the county by, before December 30th, which is a requirement under the CARES Act. So that's the Utility Assistance Update.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we're going to have a few items here where we're going to talk about additional allocations out of our CARES Act funds. The first one is for the Public Building Commission in the amount of $44,966, which would be to reimburse them for expenses incurred for PPNE for the months of July and August, and also about $8,600 for computers so that their people could telework. And Paul Cone is here, and so I don't know if you guys have any questions for him, but that's the first item.
We have a motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Boyle, to approve item B1. Questions or comments? Allocating $44,966 to the Building Commission for PPNE and telework equipment. Questions or comments? Then I would ask for the vote, please.
Motion passes six to zero.
Nice job, Paul.
Okay, the next item we have for allocation on the agenda is a request from the county clerk to allocate $96,456 to his office and to allocate $4,188 to the budget of the Board of Equalization for eligible expenses to mitigate the potential spread of the virus. And these would be for things primarily in their public areas, in dealing with how they want to handle people coming in for marriage licenses and other things they ask for from the clerk's office. I don't know, Dan, if you want to talk anymore about it, but that's the request.
Do we have, what is the will of the board on? All right. I will second that. So, motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by me, to approve $96,456 for the county clerk and $4,188 for the Board of Equalization of CARES Act funds. Questions or comments? Could we please vote?
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Item three is a resolution directing that any obligated and unobligated CARES Act funds that have not been spent by December 23rd, 2020, shall be used to reimburse Douglas County for its public health and public safety payroll. And the action can be taken today. We have discussed the possibility of having to have a meeting at year-end to change. This takes care of it. We don't need to have that year-end meeting because of this action that we're able to take today. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Boyle, to approve item B3. Questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Mr. Lorenz, what's the estimated amount of unobligated CARES Act funds?
Right now, we have about, a little over $2 million that hasn't been earmarked, and probably about $10 million that hasn't been spent.
So 12 million estimated?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, some of that will be spent by, that's just up-to-date of what we've have.
Right. Well, I think we heard that there would be something like 20% or 25% of the $10 million for rent assistance that will be unexpended. So that's two and a half million dollars. It appears that about 50% of the $4 million that was assigned to utilities assistance may not be allocated.
Maybe a million. They said 75. They told me 75.
I'm having difficulty hearing you, please.
I think it might, that's closer to a million, because they were telling me about 75%.
A million, okay. So that'll be like three and a half billion, just those two programs. And then the $10 million is unassigned to anything at this point. Is that correct?
It's assigned but not spent. There's really only, like I say, a little over $2 million that hasn't been assigned. And so what, if you get into the mechanics of this, I've had the Oracle Payroll Group pull together the seven departments, public health and public safety salaries, for the three-month period, the quarter ending September 30th. And if you take all those salaries, you can use a presumption for public health and public safety. There's a between, excuse me, 28 and 30 million dollars there. So once we see exactly what we've spent and how much we have left over, we'll be able to offset that total amount by claiming presumptive salaries for public health and public safety.
Okay. So we lapse these unexpended funds into our general fund?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have to earmark that we would do anything with them at that point?
No, once they come into our general fund under that assumption, presumptive assumption, then it is up for the county board to spend the money as they deem appropriate.
Okay. So I'm just asking, but why wouldn't we say the board hereby directs that any unobligated, obligated and unobligated CARES Act funds that are not spent be lapsed into the general fund? Wouldn't that be... Wouldn't that be simpler, just to give us some latitude in case we wanted to do some other things with them?
Patrick wrote the resolution, so I can speak to it.
I think that the resolution, for all intents and purposes, I don't have it in front of me.
I, I, I'm sorry, I, I really am having difficulty hearing what you're saying.
Well, I don't have the resolution in front of me, but it says that, let's see. I don't, I need to see the actual, I mean, there's an agenda item.
For CARES Act funding for its public health and public safety payrolls.
Somebody have the resolution so I can see it.
Which we already did on September 29th.
So.
For the month through March, April, and May. But we can lapse this.
This is where it goes. So it basically says that directs that the unobligated and obligated CARES Act funds not spent by December 23rd, excluding the allocated stimulus funds, shall be used by Douglas County to reimburse itself for public health and public safety payrolls.
Right.
So that, and that's, I don't think it needs to, just like the previous resolution we did to capture the 26 million, we are reimbursing ourselves for that. It will go into the general fund. Mechanically or legally, it doesn't need to say that it's gonna go into the general fund because that is where it goes when we reimburse ourselves.
But wouldn't it allow us greater latitude if we just said generically it goes to the general fund?
No, because you already have that latitude. That, that is, it's, it's language that's not, it's additional language. If the county board wants to add that language, that's fine, but it's surplus. It's, it's not necessary to effectuate what you want to do because that is where the money will go into the general fund by default. It goes into the general fund. And because it's in the general fund, you will have latitude to spend it any legal way you want to spend it.
Okay, what I'm looking at is the 2021 unexpended CARES balance that will sit in our general fund. This resolution seems to restrict our use of that to particular departments and particular uses. You're saying it's not restricted, we could do whatever we wanted with it in 2021.
It doesn't say it's restrictive and, and it's not restrictive.
Okay, well, I think that's important because as we talked about, there's gonna be additional needs above and beyond our payroll needs that we might want to address during this emergency. I don't know if the county attorney has something to add to this?
Teresa, your county attorney's office. I would just add that the reason that's in the first resolved paragraph regarding the presumptive payroll is you have to have a reason under CARES Act that you can take the money. And so that's your reason. Your reason is you're allowed to offset your payroll for the public health and public safety. And so you do need that in there. That's your, your justification for it coming to the county.
The CARES Act allows us to lapse unexpended funds to our general fund, is that right?
It doesn't use the word lapse. It allows you to allocate for certain departments their payroll, there's a presumption. And so the, the board already did that, and Patrick correctly documented that in your second whereas paragraph. This board already did that for the months of March, April, and May. And so now Joe is seeking to do, do that for the rest of the year, up to the extent that there's money to do that. And I think that the payroll will exceed what's available for you to take.
Okay, so would it allow us then to use CARES Act funds for other purposes in 2021?
So what Joe and Patrick said is accurate. So you, what you've, you've used it for an, a, an eligible purpose under CARES Act, and you've taken the money, you've taken it for payroll, and you've put it into your fund, and it goes into general fund by default. And so you, you, you have spent it for an eligible CARES Act purpose.
So it's already dedicated on, you know, execution of this resolution. It's not free to use for any other funds, any other purposes than what's outlined here in the resolution. Is that correct?
It's, I don't understand the question. It's not, there's nothing in the resolution that specifies how the money should be spent. The, the reference to departments is.
Shall be used, I'm sorry, it says shall be used by Douglas County, shall be used.
By Douglas County.
Okay, well, let's. Shall, okay, so it says directs that any obligated and unobligated Douglas County CARES Act funds not spent by December 23rd shall be used by Douglas County to reimburse itself for the public health and public safety payrolls. So we're taking that CARES Act money, and we are using it for a specific purpose. That specific purpose is to reimburse ourselves for the payrolls of certain public health and public safety departments.
Right.
So that is what we're using those CARES Act funds for.
I really want to get to the question.
Right, so, so that, I understand what you're saying. So, so now, once we've done that, it by default goes into our general fund. So now we have that money to spend any way the county board wants to spend. Yeah, any way the county board wants to spend.
I, I see what you're saying. It'd be kind of an offset. You would have this amount and, you know, you would have other amounts already dedicated or expended in the general fund.
So if you, if you have, let's say there's $10 million of CARES Act funds unspent, and let's, and so we capture that, do our payrolls, so that 10 million goes in to the general fund, and now you have that general fund money to spend any way you want to spend.
I, I get it, I, I understand.
Commissioner Boyle, did you have a point?
I've been listening, and I saw the same thing last night when I read this. And what jumped out at me was the word shall. What if we changed that to may?
Commissioner, you can't do that because when you say shall, all you're saying is.
Mandatory, it's mandatory.
Yes, it is mandatory. You are using it for this purpose. This purpose is you're using the CARES Act funds, like, let's say you were using the CARES Act funds for the rental assistance program. Now you're using the CARES Act funds to, to capture those payroll expenses.
Okay, so what you're saying is, excuse me, but I think, I guess what you're saying is you're, you're using, I don't want to say this, but I will, you're using smoke and mirrors with this resolution. You're saying you're gonna use it for public health and public safety payrolls. And you go ahead and do that, but then it frees up other money in the, in the general fund to use it for mental health or something else, is that the point?
Yes.
Yes, for all intents and purposes.
Not smoke and mirrors, but.
And, and we did this last couple of months ago with the initial 26 million. So for all intents and purposes, yes.
Okay, all right, as long as we have the latitude to make decisions on where this goes, I'm okay with it.
Absolutely.
I think it's kind of convoluted.
That's fine.
We, we had 166, 166 million dollars.
Right.
And we have this ability now to use presumptive payrolls. So what we're just doing here is making sure we spend down all the CARES Act money, the 166 million, and we get to use it against these payrolls for these seven departments. But these, this is a reimbursement because we've already paid these payrolls. So we're reimbursing ourselves for money spent already that was in the budget. So because that doesn't, that's not incremental, we get this, this is like money that comes in that right now, after that point when we have the money, that's found, that's not budgeted money that we've received because the budgeted money was spent. So we get that money, and then that money sits there in the general fund and can be spent at the discretion of the county board, how they would like to do it.
Okay, so in other words, we can spend it for other needs, mental health or whatever.
Absolutely. You know, we're getting, we don't have all these CARES Act restrictions. It becomes unrestricted general fund money.
All right, and I take it.
Which is a good thing.
I take it this is what we paid Deloitte to come up with, that's good.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to call for the, the vote now on.
Thank you, thank you.
There's a motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Boyle. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Item four, Catholic Charities Funding Request to Allocate $667,700 of CARES Act Funds for New HVAC Equipment at the Juan Diego Center and the Bedford Building to Assist in Mitigating the COVID-19 Virus. Interesting, is there a second?
If, if I may ask a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kraft.
Yeah, will they be able to complete this by the end of the year?
This is HVAC equipment, and so HVAC equipment is a special category because there's a shortage of it right now. So the government is giving you, giving us leeway on this where if essentially the order is placed and arrangements are made for, to install it when it arrives, then the government will allow it. This is a special category. They have a couple, you know, in talking with Deloitte, there's a couple of special categories. HVAC is one, another is broadband out in rural areas. And because these things have longer lead times and there's been a significant increase in demand, they're in essence granting an extension if the items are ordered and preparations are made prior to December 30th.
Thank you for the explanation.
Good question, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor that has not received a second yet to approve item B4.
Bartels is on the Zoom call if she wants to make a comment from Catholic Charities.
Well, it might be a moot point if we don't get a second.
Well, I guess I'm kind of surprised. What's, can somebody say what the problem is, is because it's Catholics? I mean, does it look like it's religious to you, or, these are?
All right, Commissioner Rogers is seconded for purposes of discussion.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm really curious, is there, is there a problem? We ought to, we ought to talk about it if there's a problem.
It's first I heard of it, I don't, that's why I'm trying to get an understanding.
Well, why don't we have Mrs. Bartels speak to it? She's on Zoom now.
Hi, this is Denise Bartels, Catholic Charities Vice President for Development. County Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to even present this grant proposal before you. The two locations that we're talking about, first of all, is the Juan Diego Center, which is on 30th and Q Street. Just to talk about the capacity that we have down there right now. We have a food pantry, we have our micro business program, we have a Latina Resource Family Straining Center in our micro business program. But more importantly, right now, our pantry that is taking care of the needs in that community. In a typical year, we serve about 200,000 pounds of food. Since COVID has hit in March, we've served over a million pounds of food with over 100,000 people serving down there. Our Bedford Building is our new location. We were previously at the Sheehan Center on six, or, excuse me, 60th and Military. That was owned by the Arch Diocese of Omaha that sold that campus. So we had to find a new location. We do have the only dedicated domestic violence shelter in Douglas County that is housed there in the Bedford Building. We will be putting that there. We will have growth for expansion as well, as well as a third pantry. Our mental health behavior services will be there as well. And yes, we can purchase the, at least get the purchase in by December 30th for the HVAC system.
Commissioner Rogers.
I mean, I'm trying to get a feel, I mean, this, is this just a plain HVAC replacement or is this reverse airflow like other requests?
It's both.
The question was, is it, did Morrissey, I believe that's who you had, Morrison or someone?
Yes, George Morrissey.
Is it reverse airflow or is it just a replacement of a HVAC?
It's a replacement. Aaron, Aaron Rouse, our Vice President of Facilities, is on.
Yeah, Aaron Davis, Vice President of Operations with Catholic Charities. The system is aged enough that without conditioning the air, we could potentially maintain some of those units. There's about 20 units on the roof. But if we were going to condition the air, those, those items aren't typically set up to work with those older units and the newer units. So as opposed to putting something on an old machine that's gonna need replaced soon, the reasoning was to redo the HVAC system and then put the conditioning units on those that would work well into the future.
I don't, does that mean it's reverse airflow or not? Does that mean it's reverse airflow?
Well, I, I know there's a lot of different types of the conditioning. I would have to look into whether it's reverse airflow or a plasma system. I know that there's multiple different types. I can't recall what Morrissey specifically directed us to utilize.
Well, that's, that's my question. If it's, I mean, if it's not reverse airflow, just putting an air conditioner there in a COVID environment does no good. So that's what I need to, that's why I'm asking to confirm. Putting a, a regular system in now without reverse airflow is, I'm trying, that's not hard COVID related. The vote, the reverse airflow is what gives it the deal in the new system.
So he specifically quoted us for a system similar to what the other larger agencies are doing in Omaha to condition the, the air. So I apologize not under, knowing exactly what the term is, and I will try to find that as soon as I can here. But it's, it's the same unit that they've been doing around, that Morrissey has been putting on other larger agencies due to COVID.
Commissioner Boyle, to answer your question, first off, don't go there about it because it's Catholic, that.
Well, I, I was kind of stunned because I thought there's so much religious problems today. I couldn't figure it out outside of that you thought it was a religious body, whether it's Lutherans or Catholics or, you know, whoever. So that's why I said that.
Okay, it has nothing to do with.
Religion.
With religion.
Got it.
What it does have to do with is, I believe, they've already been funded through the Omaha Community Foundation, who we gave 28 million dollars to disperse to nonprofits around town. They got their money from the Omaha Community Foundation and said, that's not enough, we want more. And so they're coming back to us for more. That's my apprehension, is if we're gonna do this for one agency that did not get as much as they wanted from the Omaha Community Foundation, then why aren't we doing it for every agency that did not get?
I guess they have to ask, but.
Well, that's, that's my apprehension. In answer to your question, that's my apprehension, is this, they're asking for, in my mind, a, a second bite of the pie here.
If some other body needs additional money, they should ask, is what I'm saying. And I, you know, I, whatever, I, I just was taken aback. No questions were being asked, and I thought, what's, what's the obvious problem?
Which is why I wanted to give you my rationale for dragging.
I appreciate, I wish you'd given it to me earlier so I wouldn't have blurted out the religion.
Okay. All right, further questions or comments to this?
Well, I, I'd like to say, maybe what we ought to do is ask the professionals, ask Mr. Davis to get ahold of the Morrissey people or whoever it is, and ask them what it is they're doing to particularly answer Commissioner Rogers' question, which makes a big difference, at least what they're putting in. And then it can stand or fall on whether or not it's extra funding.
Yes, absolutely, I can do that.
Well, our, when is our next meeting? Do you want to lay this over or what do we want to do?
Lay it over two weeks.
What's that?
It's two weeks.
Two weeks from today, December 8th.
Okay. Well, I think that's probably what we ought to do, we ought to at least get an answer and probably answer the, I guess, what's being, you know, you got money and now you're asking for more. So maybe we ought to try to explain that. I, I guess it's because you need it, so, you know.
So is that a motion to lay over for two weeks?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to lay it over for two weeks.
And, and Commissioner Borgeson seconded that motion. Questions or comments now to that motion to lay this over for two weeks?
Well, Mr. Chair, can I just?
Commissioner Rogers.
You know, I, the, I don't think the issue is need because, I mean, we've given this to some other governmental entities to some degree. I don't think the issue is need. That's why I asked the question, you know, is it the reverse airflow? The, the issue is this request can be made of every nonprofit in the city.
Right.
And that's when I'm, that's when I'm having a tour, that I don't doubt their need, but I'm trying to weigh on being fair here, so that's, that's where I'm at. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, so the motion before us is to lay it over item B4 for two weeks. Questions or comments to that motion? If not, I would call for the vote.
Motion to lay over passes six to zero.
Thank you. Item B5.
Take your time.
Thank you, Denise. B5, Waterloo Fire. Joe, you wanna?
Well, maybe we can do five and six together.
All right.
And these were late requests from local governments, specifically from two volunteer fire departments who are requesting funds for equipment, primarily, I believe, related to ambulances in terms of mechanized stretchers or monitor. Maybe Claire can talk to it, being a volunteer fireman himself.
Waterloo has two squads, Boyz Town one, where they're asking for a stretcher lift. It's an electric lift that, so you don't have to have four people crowded over a patient to load them into a squad. It can pick them up with just two people. We, we did a. to load them into a squad. It can pick them up with just two people. We, we did a, not through CARES Act, but on our fire department, good move. I appreciate why they're doing that. They also are getting some monitors that require less manpower, person power, excuse me, whatever, that when, once you hurt up a patient to this, it does a better job of monitoring without having to have so many people right in their face all the time. So these are, they aren't in my district or anything, but these are both, to me, good legitimate expenses. A motion and a second to approve both five and six. This is for Waterloo and Boyz Town Fire Departments, 150,000 and some change for Waterloo, 104,000 and some change for Boyz Town. Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Boyle.
Well, yes, I, I have, have the other fire and rescue units asked for the same equipment?
Not everybody's asking for the exact same thing, but we have helped every fire department in the county.
So that's sort of like Catholic charities. So others could come in and ask for it now.
Well, they already have. These are the last departments that we will be funding now. We've already funded Irvington, Oka Hills.
Are they specific?
They had different requests. They didn't ask for the exact same equipment.
So they could still, still come back and ask for this new equipment, right?
They can, they could ask. Yes.
Well, we're kind of in the same situation. So.
Well, they haven't asked yet. I mean.
Well, neither have, that's, that was the thought of Mr. Rogers, that other nonprofits are going to come in because Catholic charities wanted HVAC equipment that, you know, for whatever it is, the kind that is, you know, filtering the air. So there's other nonprofits, there's other fire departments that could come in too. So this, out of fairness, this falls to me in the same category.
I, I, I'm sorry, but this is.
Vote for it, but I think it's hypocritical.
You know, I, I didn't want to go with the monitor with Waterloo and they said, you know, you already did that for Bennington. And so we went back and looked up and yes, we did. And so out of fairness, we said, okay, you're right. We did buy this monitor for Bennington. We will put it in. We are bending over backwards trying to be fair on all of these, trying to, we really are doing our best to be as fair.
I know you are, but there are other fire departments that, that could come in in two weeks and ask for the same thing. That's my point.
All of them have.
They, we're done funding all of them now, other than Epley. Epley's the only fire department that never came in.
When I first asked you, you said, yes, others could come in.
They could. I mean, anybody can come back and ask.
Most of them have come already though.
I mean, they, anybody can ask for anything. Doesn't mean we have to give it to them.
Okay. But I'm just saying, if you set aside the other request because others could come in, as Commissioner Rogers said, then you ought to be setting these aside. I'm going to vote for these, but I just think you're splitting hairs here and I, I'm a little confused by it. I'll go ahead and vote for it, but I'll quit talking about it, but I think it's hypocritical.
Okay. All right. We have a motion before us to approve items five and six, Waterloo and Boyz Town Fire Departments. Further questions or comments? Then I would call for the vote, please.
And I'll vote for any other rescue squad that comes in and adds this equipment.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We do have one more item for consideration that is not on the agenda, and that is, as we've already discussed, the possibility of adding $150,000 to a public relations campaign that the Health Department and the state, we've been hearing a lot about this, about everybody joining together to try to make one big push concerning vaccines and all of that. So the first thing I would ask for is the declaration of an emergency to allow us to add this item to our agenda for consideration. A motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Rogers to declare an emergency for purposes of adding this item to the agenda. Quest?
I would recommend that we lay this over as well. There's been no discussion on this. We've had significant questions about why are we spending 150,000 on this ad campaign with Vic Gutman and Associates and not on any other campaign that the $166 million CARES package is running. I understand the eagerness of some of my colleagues to do what they're told on these things, and I just don't happen to agree with that. We should have public discussions about this and then add to this promotion of the programs that actually put assistance in people's pockets in this community that will be rent and utilities and possibly find some way to assist the for-profit communities that we've talked about that are being impacted, taxpayers and job creators in this county as well. This is apparently set up between now and December 20th to promote, among other things, vaccine. Vaccine doesn't exist and I'm all for strategic planning on vaccine, but you've got to advertise something that actually exists.
Can we first decide whether or not this is on the agenda before we criticize it and then discuss it?
Why don't we just lay it over so we can have that discussion rather than rush it through at the last minute when it appears?
Would you turn his microphone off, please? Okay. As we have had quite a bit of discussion about all, all we are doing at the moment is adding an item to the agenda for discussion and possible action. Only if it's to the motion about adding an item to the agenda. We aren't discussing the agenda item yet. No, Teresa. No, Larry, please let me focus on the meeting, not on you talking about something else.
If I may, Teresa York County Attorney's Office, and I'll just address first the, the motion that's on the floor.
Thank you.
As the first and the second, and that is whether to add this as an emergency item. As the board is well aware, the COVID numbers have been going up in Douglas County and the Health Department is seeking to go ahead and do a advertising campaign to get more information out to the general public. That guidance regarding COVID has changed on a regular basis, and so having accurate and current information out to the public is very important. I know that the Health Department has Mr. Kelso, Tim Kelso here to answer additional questions, but that's the reason for the emergency ask today is the fact the board doesn't meet for another two weeks, and we have seen such a rise in COVID, and it would be good to get additional information out to the public.
Thank you, Teresa. Further questions or comments to the motion before us? Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I, I think there's some merit in delaying it over, just like the others, and I, I favor it. But, you know, if you go to, the pages are not marked, but it's under the heading Fiscal Sponsorship Summary Form, and I don't know how to refer you to it. There's no numbers. It says, are your mission, vision, and values clear? And it's got a yes dot next to it. And below it, it says, do you have clearly stated goals? And do you measure progress toward these goals? The answer is no. I don't understand that. I mean, I think that would be pretty important. I, it's too bad this came in so late, but it's, it's quite a few pages. I don't know how many, but I've tried to read it during the, during the county board meeting, and it's, I just think it's, it's unfortunate that it got here so late. And I usually do support emergency motions, but I just think this ought to be laid over and we ought to get more detail and maybe have a special meeting sometime soon or whatever. We could do something to, maybe if the governor ever approves voting by Zoom, we could do a Zoom meeting. That's coming up. But anyway, I, I don't see a problem with, it's too bad, but I think we probably ought to, we ought to lay it over. So.
If I.
It's not even on the agenda yet to lay over.
Well, I know that, but I'm just saying, I think that's weird out ahead.
All right. Further questions or comments to the motion? The motion before us is to add this item to the agenda. I would call for the vote.
Before you, I would like to suggest that we do a substitute. I know this is infuriating you, Claire. Maybe you ought to have the chair, the deputy chair step in if it's making you upset.
If you want me to leave, I'll leave. You won't even let me call for a vote. What, what do you want, Mike?
You know, you're getting so upset about this. This is just a matter that we're before the board. I, I would like to do, offer a substitute motion to lay this over for two weeks.
We, I've already called for the vote.
Well, I was trying to get that in, but I didn't manage to.
Well, if you vote no on this, it's the same as not putting it on the agenda. I don't know.
It's not laying it over for two weeks, which is what I was trying to do. Go ahead, though.
Motion passes. Commissioners Cavanaugh, Boyle voting no. All other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. So this is now on the agenda as an emergency item. We, yeah, we will.
Near long while.
Commissioner Rogers makes the motion to approve, and I will second that.
I would offer a substitute motion to lay over for two weeks.
All right. We will, all right, then wait for your discussion until we vote on this. That will, that will take priority. Okay. Questions or comments to the motion to lay this over for two weeks?
I think it should be laid over because it is a very important document. It involves a lot of verbiage and we're suddenly showing up with $150,000 for an advertising agency and some other things. And I just, you know, I, I have a great deal of respect for the agency and I have all the other people involved, but I just think it's too big a rush, rush through. And I think it ought to be discussed before we go through with it. There's, why, why don't they have stated goals?
We're holding off on discussion until we vote on this.
No, I'm just saying, that's one of the reasons. They don't have stated goals.
I hope to get to that discussion if, if the item is still on the agenda. However, I will call for the vote on the substitute motion to lay over for two weeks. You want to speak to the motion?
Anybody here, either from the Health Department or from?
Sure we do. We haven't started discussing yet.
Oh, well, maybe we could, you know, have a briefing, not today, about what this is rather than do a quick, here's $150,000 for a couple pieces of paper that we saw an hour ago. And so, you know, laying it over is just best practices regarding the people's money. And we've already talked about the fact that we're not going to spend any effort advertising any of the other CARES programs that will actually help people. But boy, we, we need to hurry up on this one to, to advertise things that have been in the press for at least six months relative to what we can do and how we should do it. There's weekly news conferences, there's daily updates. It's not like no one has heard anything about what we should do. We even have an agenda item on here, which I'm glad to see because I've been pushing this for some time, to urge the governor to finally at long last come up with a mask policy for our great state because we're spiking. I think we're sixth in the nation now. So it, it's kind of curious. This is simply, you know, what are we doing and why are we doing it? And why are we doing it on this one program with this one ad agency rather than anything else? But I understand that people here have been told to get this approved today, and so they'll move heaven and earth to make sure that they do what they're told.
Thank you. Okay, Teresa?
If I may, Teresa York County Attorney's Office, and I just wanted to clarify something. This board, this is not a new allocation of money. And I would direct the board's attention to the resolution, and it's the sixth whereas down. It reads, "The Health Director Wishes to Direct the Sum of $150,000 from the CARES Act Funds Previously Allocated to the Health Department for Specific Projects, Including a Public Information Campaign." So this board already considered this campaign, already authorized the Health Department to go ahead and do it, and already allocated the money. This is just the execution of that previously looked at idea. And Tim Kelso is present today to talk more about the nuts and bolts. How this is structured before you today, the Health Department wanted to use a nonprofit to handle the funds so that they could get additional donors and additional monies because COVID will extend into 2021, and they wanted the campaign to continue on into the next year. With that in mind, this, this, the documents before you do extend into 2021, but the CARES Act money will only run through the end of 2020. And for the fiduciary part of it, OCF is already doing some things in the community. So this is structured as an amendment. It's amendment number two to the already existing subaward we have with OCF. The, the details of that, what is going to happen for your subawards are always in your statement of works. So if you look in the statement of work that is attached to the amendment, it talks about some of the things that they want to do with regards to the campaign. It's, they want to do information campaign. It'll be called the COVID-19 Awareness Campaign. It will cover topics such as what is COVID-19, how do I protect myself, how do I protect others? And additionally lists other, other topics that the campaign will address. So I simply wanted to make the board aware, this is not new money. It was already allocated.
I, I don't know why we can't lay this over and just have a normal discussion on this, other than people have been told to get this approved today.
Give me a break. Commissioner Boyle.
I've heard it too many times. I haven't been told by anybody.
I haven't either.
And if somebody can prove that, I'd like to know. I haven't visited with Tim Kelso, Teresa, Mary Ann, anyone. So let's let Tim talk. He sat here for the last three hours.
We haven't voted yet on whether this is on the agenda. We can't discuss it until we figure out whether or not we can put it on the agenda and not lay it over.
I thought we voted.
We did, but now we have a motion to lay it over for two weeks, and I'm calling for the vote on that. Commissioner Boyle.
They do, in one sense. So you're, so if I may, and I'll let Tim Kelso to speak to this as well, and I've, and correct me if I misstate anything. The Health Department did want to do this with a nonprofit. And they wanted to do it with a nonprofit so the nonprofit could accept donations from others so they could continue the campaign into 2021. So this initial $150,000 is the beginning of the, of the campaign, beginning of the program. Yes, the $150,000 is with the Health Department now. And so to facilitate that, the nonprofit, this was structured as an amendment to an already existing subaward that you have with OCF. This is an amendment number two to the OCF subaward and adding a new statement of work that would allow OCF to act as the fiduciary agent for the money. So you can accept donations should the, you want the campaign to continue on after 2020.
So they, they don't have an arrangement already with the Omaha Community Foundation?
I don't believe they do, and that's the purpose of, but you do. You have a subaward already existing with OCF.
I'm just asking if the Health Department, is that, that's the point of this then. It's not that they don't already have the money allocated, but they're trying to add a partner who can bring in nonprofit donations. Is that right? Or whatever, or bring in donations from people?
That's partially right. You have allocated money to the Health Department. You've already done that for a public awareness campaign, and the Health Department now wants.
When did we do that? Do you know?
I don't know the exact date of that allocation, but it was within the Health Department's allocation. Commissioner Rogers is saying you did it in June.
So why haven't, I can't believe they haven't spent it. And we gave it to them in June and they haven't, for public relations, and they haven't done anything with it? I guess I'll ask him that.
OCF? It's, this is an amendment number two to your existing subaward to OCF.
The floor is not yours, Commissioner Cavanaugh. The, the floor is still Commissioner Boyle's. Would you please be quiet when it's not your turn? Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I know you won't like this, but I'll yield to Commissioner Cavanaugh to ask his question.
I might not be able to answer, but Tim Kelso is here.
Is this to the motion to lay over? Is this to the motion to lay over?
I'll let Tim Kelso answer. My understanding is that they're working, oh, no, no.
We can't discuss it.
Okay.
Not until we vote on whether or not it's on the agenda.
I think, I think the motion to lay over has precedent and it's pending.
May we please vote?
Claire, I suggest you step down. You're really getting irritated about this. You're going to have a heart attack.
Would you please vote?
You're going to have a heart attack.
Are you going to vote?
Yeah, but.
Okay, okay, then vote. Just vote.
We're voting to lay it over.
Correct. So we can discuss it possibly.
Jeez, I'm telling you. It's ridiculous.
All right. Motion fails. Commissioners Cavanaugh, Boyle voting yes to lay over. All other commissioners voting no.
Okay, so now we have an item on the agenda for consideration. Commissioner Rogers.
Chair, before Tim comes, let me, I guess, put a, put the rest, a couple of falsehoods that have been said. I, I agree. I'm probably the only person here that knows about this because I was a part of the press conference that happened Thursday for the, the campaign. And the money, the statement is being made that people were told, no, in June, we, we approved a series of funds to the Health Department. And in that series of money was money to go to promote COVID-19 prevention and public education for a series of audiences. It's been said that we haven't approved information with this in the past. No, you're wrong. We just approved it an hour ago because in the consent agenda is money to the empowerment network where that money's going to be used to target African-American audiences. We approved money several months ago to go to Latino publications that are used to speak to Latinos. We approved money several months ago to go to Latino publications that are used to speak to Latino audiences. And one of the events they just had was an event on Facebook last week where all the Spanish-speaking doctors went to do that. There's also money that was there to promote messages to refugee populations, so, and we all voted 6-0 to approve that. So the, the point being said that we haven't voted for this before, no, we have. And so this is no different than that, it's just allocating the money to the OCF, to the campaign. All those nonprofits that we have given money to in the past to promote COVID-19 messages have sublet that money out to organizations that have to meet those demands, and they're creating the messages specifically for their audiences. The paperwork that you have here is OCF paperwork that they filled out as a fact to flow it through. It's not a lot of merit in regards because the measurements, there are ads, social media pieces, everything that's been put out there and showed to the public Wednesday. So there's product and other things out there that's done and ready to go. The result of it is awareness, and increasing that awareness particularly right now because at the same time, as things have evolved and continue to evolve, the vaccine is coming. It's not a fact that it's not coming, there are three vaccines, there are already movements lined up for distribution. It was just said on the call yesterday that it's being lined up to be distributed in our own long-term care centers. So the vaccine piece is there, and everybody on 1A who are essential workers, healthcare workers and everything are there. So information about the vaccine, also information out there that's being counter, put out there on social Facebook pages and everything else by anti-vaxxers or what we're trying to fight right now in this critical element. So this is not new, it's a reallocation of what we've done in the past, and we voted forward for entities to go at least three times this year. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Kelso, did you have anything you would like to add from the Health Department perspective?
I don't know.
I don't blame you.
Good morning, Tim Kelso.
Good morning, Tim.
Douglas County Health Department. I wanted to clear up a couple of things here that had been said. Yep, is that better?
Yes.
Tim Kelso, Douglas County Health Department. I want to clear up a couple of things that have been said so that we know what we're focused on. You just said you couldn't hear me.
We did say we couldn't hear you and you're 10 feet from anybody, but whatever.
All right, so, uh, the, uh, the agreement here is with Omaha Community Foundation. And they have basically agreed to act as a fiduciary agent for a collaborative effort to get messages out about COVID. And you say, well, what's new about this? Well, yeah, you know what, there's a lot of stuff in the press. That's not an infomercial by any means, it's not a PSA. And what needs to happen here is the public needs to be made aware of things like the various vaccines that are out there, which, which one is for what purpose? Because right now, the polls suggest that only 60% of the population are considering getting vaccinated, and that percentage needs to be increased. And so part of this campaign is to provide information so people can make an informed decision that, you know what, I do want to get vaccinated. And, and that is, is, uh, in large part, the big rush here. Because all of a sudden, as Commissioner Rogers has indicated, three vaccines are sitting now with the FDA seeking emergency approval, and manufacturers have indicated that upon approval, they're ready to ship. So the vaccines will be getting out there. And this is, this is a big collaborative effort. So I know, uh, it had been mentioned Vic Gutman's and Vic Gutman Associates. This isn't a contract with them, this is a contract with OCF. Dr. Poor got together with Vic Gutman and started brainstorming about how we can create a lasting campaign when the need hit and extend it beyond December 30th. And so they worked together, and I think Commissioner Rogers may have been involved in some of those discussions too. And what they have done is they pulled together all kinds of different media outlets, TV, social media, radio, et cetera, and getting them all to commit to run certain PSAs as a PSA for free, getting TV stations to do that. But there are costs involved in developing the campaign. And so this $150,000 is just the, in a way, I'd call it seed capital, to get that work paid for. Some of that work's already been done. And so ultimately, OCF is in the position of contacting its regular donors and others to say, would you be willing to contribute to this, the costs of this campaign? And that is why it's going through OCF so that the donors can make donations there and draw whatever benefit they may be able to from donating to OCF. So I, are there any other questions?
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
It's red now. Okay, thank you for this. Previous speakers have indicated that it is the intention of the Health Department using this $150,000 contract with Vic Gutman and Associates through the Omaha Community Foundation to partner with other not-for-profits next year on a public information campaign regarding the COVID-19 pandemic and the, and the hopeful soon, the, the vaccine. Who are those other not-for-profits? That's, that was my question, I'm just curious.
I don't believe that that statement was accurate. The nonprofit involved in this is OCF.
Okay, so it's, it's the Health Department reaching out to Vic Gutman to fund this through OCF?
No, Vic Gutman was just part of the group that started brainstorming on how to get this done because we have, as you know, the December 30th deadline.
Right.
Vaccine for the general public under Phase 1B, which I believe they estimate will be affecting or allowing 60% of Nebraska's population will occur in 2021. CARES Act funds die December 30th. So they work together with the director and others saying, okay, can't we poll the community together? Can't we poll the news places together, all the media outlets? And say, we all need to pitch in here and do this for the population. And it's just that there is some work, some of the graphic work sounds like, will have to be paid for. Some of it's being donated, some of it's being paid for. I don't have these specifics right now, but I do know that these funds will be spent by December 30th.
Yes, I see that in the paperwork, it's actually spent by, I believe, December 20th. You know, I guess my question is, that's already been done. What additional public information do we need to put out there? I mean, you can't turn on the TV, you can't pick up the paper, you can't listen to the radio without getting this information right now. Weekly press conferences by the governor, the mayor, Dr. Poor and others are, you know, out there right now. What other PSAs are you talking about? Because this doesn't appear to be paid media, it's just additional public earned media that we've already had in abundance and have every day.
And again, this goes to, what does the public know and what don't they know? What are they not getting from the, all the press releases? And what is it going to take to get them to say, you know what, vaccine is the right thing for me to do? Whether it's for myself, or for my family, or for my coworkers? It's a, it's a big effort to educate the population on that.
I agree with that, and you know, that's a commendable thing, but it doesn't seem to me to be met by a contract with a particular ad agency.
There's no contract with that ad agency.
Okay, however you want to call giving them $150,000.
They're not getting $150,000.
That's what this calls for, $150,000.
No, it doesn't, I'm sorry, it does not.
Are we talking about something else? I thought this was $150,000 for Vic Gutman and Associates.
No, it's $150,000 that goes to the Omaha Community Foundation to be dispersed on expenses that may be incurred to develop the campaign. There are numerous places that will be working on the campaign, whether by pro bono, or at no charge, or donated, whatever term you want. But there are some that will be paid, and the specifics of that, I don't know.
Okay, Commissioner Rogers.
Okay, there we go. Just to follow Patina's point, I mean, this, this thing about Vic Gutman got brought in to the fact, nobody ever said that. So, you know, stories are getting convoluted here now, trying to keep track. So the point of it is, the TV stations and everything are involved, part of that is pro bono. They're contributing time to this, there's not an advertising agency involved. The pieces that were already made, OCF, I'm assuming, from what I know about it, has put up to do that, those are done, that's the coordinating body. So there's not a, there's not this, uh, um, all of, there's not this described or alluded to payday to do something to some degree. It's a community-wide effort where they're involved to facilitate some things, and the, and all the stations from around the state are donating time and space to do this campaign. That's, that's the heart of it.
Thank you. Further questions or comments to the motion? Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I'd like to ask, you know, first of all, I know, I know Vic Gutman very well, and he's incredibly competent and a terrific person, there's no disputing that. I don't understand his role in this, is, is he being compensated anything? Does anyone know? I mean, I don't, if he's doing it for free-
Not, not via this contract.
No, I, I do not know if-
Well, if you, if you don't-
My understanding is that he was providing his services at no charge.
At no charge?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's fine if it's no charge.
Whether there are expenses that he may incur that may be reimbursed, I don't know. There could be, I suppose. But this is not $150,000 going to Mr. Gutman.
Yeah, okay, well, see, first of all, I want to say, Tim Kelso and I go back a couple hundred years, I think, and we're good friends. And so I, I mean, I, but if Tim's standing there in front of us representing the Health Department and saying, answering, I don't know, I, I don't know why, I don't know why, we can't discuss this, this, these pages. You know, for example, one of the things I keep coming across, it's Exhibit A, and I, sorry, the pages aren't numbered. It says, has your group, this is Vic Gut, Vic Gutman, it's COVID-19 Awareness Campaign, care of Vic Gutman and his address and everything else. And then it says, has your group incorporated with the state as a separate legal entity responsible for its own actions? The answer is no. Does your group plan to look for nonprofit status? No. Do you have liability insurance? No. Then you go back to another page here, and it's under Exhibit D, Fiscal Sponsorship Agreement, and it goes on to say, OCF must be named as one of the additional insureds on the project's funds as, as our assets of OCF. So now they're asking to be, for proof of insurance, and Vic Gutman says, I'm not getting insurance. And so I don't know what that really means, but then you go down to Fiscal Sponsorship Summary Form, and it says, are you, it says, are your mission, values and visions clear? Yes. Do you have clearly stated goals and do you measure progress toward those goals? No. I don't get that at all. Down below, is the project willing to secure the appropriate insurance and supply OCF with documentation? No, well, OCF is saying back here, we've got to have it. Please, please, if we have to, let's have a special, let's, this is the problem. There's none of us that don't support more publicity. I know I'm very upset about the people who don't want vaccinations. My family is not getting together at all for Thanksgiving, we're having six separate separations, it's to be safe. So I'm with the program, but I don't think this contract is clean. I don't know who put it together, I'm really sorry, but it is, there is too many things conflicting. And I really think we should lay it over so that we can, we can read it clearly and discuss it. That's all I'm asking.
We're sure good at confusing things. This is not a contract with Vic Gutman, I'm not sure that Vic Gutman is even in the resolution. But we are twisting this to being all about Vic Gutman.
No, I, forget, forget him, forget, I'm talking about-
This is between the Health Department and the Omaha Community Foundation.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, good.
I just asked about Vic in the beginning because it wasn't clear.
Mr. Chair, can I add one more? I mean, I, I would think, Commissioner Boyle, you're, you're bringing into it a OCF accounting document, I mean, a OCF process document that I'm, that I am almost sure they included just to give complete information. It's a special project that OCF, my, my strong 99% thought on this is, they had to fill that out so they have a record on the OCF's books for their process. This, and this probably a part of the process they do for the funds that they do and acts. And so they had them fill that out so they have something on record to flow this through. I don't think that them having insurance or anything like that is not, because it's not the traditional project that they have, that that's information that I'm assuming Donna and the OCF provided just so you can have detail, not thinking it would get to this because the, that's just a process so they have something on record so the OCF has something on record with the entity. So we shouldn't, that's, that's nothing for us to get caught up in.
Well, it, I'm sorry, I disagree, I'm a lawyer, and when you have something in writing, we're agreeing that you're going to provide insurance-
It's just application.
No, we're not, the details are not clear, that's all I'm asking. I think this thing is a form that shouldn't have been used, so it should be laid over, really, it's bad. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Attached to these documents is a memorandum of understanding, which is a contract. And under the terms of the memorandum of understanding, it has the Douglas County Health Department, Vic Gutman and Associates, and the Omaha Community Foundation. It has the Omaha Community Foundation's role in part to enter into contracts relating to the campaign. That's a quote from the memorandum of understanding, which is a contract. They enter into contracts including creative services, social media management, services, ad buys, et cetera. Well, presumably, that's not going to be Dr. Poor's job, that's going to be Vic Gutman and Associates' job. I mean, it, it's not really conducive to a comfort level here if we don't just admit what's going on. I'm not against informing the community on the importance of vaccines. What I'm against is people hiding the ball when it comes to, this is a contract, and it has a contract sub to this with Vic Gutman and Associates, I agree with Commissioner Boyle. I know Vic Gutman, and I've worked with Vic Gutman, and he does a fine job. But just admit what's going on here. This is a $150,000 contract for the Omaha Community Foundation to sub with Vic Gutman to perform this service, which is probably a needed service. Just admit what's going on here, and I think we can probably move on, but- But the hiding the ball portion of this is really a head-scratcher, because if you read the documents you've provided us, it's a contract.
There's no question, Commissioner, that that document is a contract.
Well, I think every lawyer on the board will say, an MOU with contract language, offer acceptance and consideration, is a contract legally.
I don't think anybody disagrees with that, but I can tell you.
Right into the microphone.
I'm sorry. The, the documents that Commissioner Boyle referred to, as Commissioner Rogers stated, are the standard documents for OCF. Those are the things that they require when they fund a project. The reference to, are you going to get incorporated and do you have insurance? That's for this collaborative group. They're not forming a legal entity. They're just getting together and doing this. And so, that is why that page says, well.
Well, then, what are these contracts that they're going to enter into?
Kavanaugh.
That's a quote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
He's responding to my remarks. But you're interrupting. I want to give. I'm asking a specific question. You're interrupting. Please, please.
I do not know, nor would anybody be able to tell you who all is going to be involved in this. It's a collaborative effort. But this is, there's no hiding the ball here. The documents say what they say. The $150,000 will go to OCF. Who will distribute it in accordance with the CARES Act? Period.
Thank you. Further questions or comments to the motion? Okay, we're going to wrap this up soon.
I know, I know you don't want questions, but I insist.
No, I want new.
You need to step down.
I want new information.
Claire, come on, this is a, I'm following up, if you'll let me. You just, you said something, and I've lost my train of thought, but you said something very simple. What did you just say? That what we need, what we need to do is exactly what we need to do. Whatever it was you said, I'm totally distracted by your, your rage. I'm getting tired of your rages, Claire. Come on. Now you're calming down. You should have done that 20 minutes ago.
Okay.
Thank you. Now, I will go ahead and ask my question as best I can. Can you possibly simplify this? You know, there's all these calls for insurance, there's things about nonprofits, all this kind of thing, you know? And it's very muddy. I, I don't know what, if, if this is an OCF form.
Yes.
It's a mistake to use it. It just, it is so big and unclear and makes duplicate kind of comments, and it just, it doesn't make sense, Tim.
Commissioner, thank you for that comment. All I can say is, those are OCF standard forms, so they have to be used. If they're going to be involved in the funding, these are the, the forms that apparent, I'm assuming their lawyers, have said, this is what you use when you fund a project.
But you know what? They don't fit. Because we've got, we've got the ad agency in there, which is a terrific agency. We don't know what they're doing. I guess we kind of pursue it. We just got this document, and, and we don't, you know, I, I understand, and I'm all in favor of information on all this, but I just, it's, it's poorly drafted. It really is. I mean, you can't have a contract by circling little dots, yes and no. That's no way to do business. You have to be clear. I mean, that may sound clear, but it's not. I just, I really wish we would discuss this fully in a calm situation.
Are you, are you through?
I am, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments to the motion? Commissioner Kavanaugh. Okay. On page two of the memorandum of understanding, provided by Omaha Community Foundation, under C, it says, Vic Gutman and Associates is donating 100% of its services to this campaign. Now, the plain meaning of that, to me, would be, none of this $150,000 is going to be paid to Vic Gutman and Associates. Is that your understanding?
I'm saying that I cannot tell you what expenses will.
I'm sorry, you have to speak up.
I can't tell you, as I stand here, like any other one of these agreements, who exactly the subs are going to be that'll be called upon to provide service. I do know, like it says, Mr. Gutman's agency is not getting paid for its service. That doesn't mean that, for example, if he incurred expenses, that maybe they're going to seek reimbursement for that. I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Larry, this is your opportunity, sir.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Thank you for this enlightenment. I want to say that words do matter. First of all, this is not a community-wide effort, because I'm not behind it, and I suspect that more than a majority of people like me are not. So, it's not. Words matter. Let's go back to 1917 and then into the 20s, when the Bolsheviks and the Hitler Nazis took over. They started in bodies just like this, ladies and gentlemen. They didn't always tell the truth. One thing led to another, and the Nazis had power. And then Neville Chamberlain one day said, oh, peace in our time. People believed him, but then he came back from Germany, and there wasn't peace, because the words between the two bodies didn't match. This is an emergency order, and I stood up because I feared you'd close this. All of a sudden, there's an emergency order. Citizens do not get to talk. That's why I stood up. We're getting tired of emergency orders every week. This is a violation of my rights as a citizen, to life, liberty, pursuit of happiness. That's, anybody that violates the Constitution or my rights is unconstitutional. So, you need to not just delay this, you need to trash cam it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments to the motion? Then I would call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes. Commissioner Boyle voting no. Commissioner Kavanaugh abstaining. All other commissioners voting yes.
All right. Our rules say abstentions are when you have a conflict of interest, just for what it's worth. Okay, we will move next, the next item, I'm hoping there's nothing under the budget report that we need to stop for. We'll move down to a resolution approving the Douglas County Local Emergency Operations Plan, the LEAP. Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Rogers. I, I notice Paul Johnson is present, if we had any questions about this. All right.
What I'd like to say is, this is a, a normal operational plan that is presented to the county board, and there's nothing startling in it, and so, and it's not an emergency. So, if you would, I believe there was a motion on the second already, so I, I would call for the vote.
Thank you. Yeah, this gets updated regularly. I, I was actually a part, like 27 years ago, of putting together the first one. When I joined, we didn't have one, but now we just try to keep it current, and so, we just simply keep them updated. Okay, we have a motion before us to accept, approve the latest LEAP. If there are no further questions or comments, could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Legislative issues? Any, anything? So, this is item 2A, Resolution Approving Douglas County's Preliminary 2021 Legislative Priorities. Is that, that's a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Questions or comments to that? Okay, then I would ask for a vote, please.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Other legislation? Good. Last on the agenda in open session is a resolution requesting the governor to issue a statewide mask mandate and to allow all members of public bodies to participate and vote in meetings remotely, coming from Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I put this on again because of the spike that we're seeing in our positive cases and especially our dire situation of our hospital beds and ventilators. I am trying to, to bring this forward as apolitical as possible, because I think it's time we start talking about this pandemic as a public health issue again versus a political issue. I think this is just, again, an encouragement of our governor to do this statewide, as the whole state is affected by this. We know that we have had these recommendations for a number of months. None of us, you know, want government interference in lives, but this is a public health issue that needs to be addressed, and that's all I'm trying to get at, as well as the Zoom call meetings that would allow folks to be able, as such as us, a public body, to hold our meetings and have those that are on a Zoom call be able to vote, as we did at the beginning, which, yes, does include Commissioner Kraft. He's been on every single one from the beginning, and he, again, should have the ability to vote. And again, he's participated. We, we appreciate that, but he should be able to vote. That's all this is, is imploring upon him to do this statewide. You know, we can begin, I don't even want to put a timeline on it. I just want him to, to establish it statewide, watch our numbers, and see where this goes. So, again, I am trying to do this as apolitical as possible and more in the spirit of public health, that will ultimately save lives. Think about our healthcare workers. I just, you know, I'm beginning to really pay attention to the stories that our healthcare workers are putting out there, and it is heart-wrenching to see what they are going through during this pandemic. And I think, again, it is imperative for us to impress upon the person who can establish the statewide mask mandate for every person within the state of Nebraska. But again, let's think about our healthcare workers especially. I know many of them personally, and my heart goes out to them. And this is, I just feel like we need to do something, and we need to implore upon him to do this, again, in the spirit of the public health issue and the lives of our Nebraska residents. So, thank you. And I would move to approve.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Boyle.
And, and if I may speak.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. Mary Ann, thank you for putting this forward and supporting, wanting my ability to vote. I, too, would want to be able to vote on many of these issues. When it was necessary for me to come in, I came in because I was afraid certain things weren't going to pass. But my health is not as good as I would like it to be, and therefore, the only way I can participate at this time is by Zoom. So, again, thank you. I hope this passes unanimously, and of course, I would vote for it. So, Dan, if you would please put down that I very firmly support this. Thank you.
The, the problem is, passing unanimously doesn't mean it's going to have any effect. I, I wholeheartedly support it. Great idea. I, I personally, I mean, a few months ago, we, we passed a resolution saying, please allow local health departments to do their own job without, you know, when our health director says, I'm thinking of a mask mandate, and the governor says, if you do, then, then the Attorney General's taking you to court to stop you. You know, where's the local control? So, I, I fear this will fall on deaf ears, but it's still a good idea, and I'm glad you put it on. Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I, I think that, I'd like to add my name to co-sponsor. I feel so strongly about this. You know, I mentioned earlier that, I mean, we're, our, the Boyle family and extended family and in-laws and outlaws are taking the COVID threat extremely seriously. We have had nine people in our family, extended family, Ann was the oldest of 12, and two, three of her sisters came down, and it goes on and on. But no one has had the serious, the serious lasting effects that, of course, there are some, but not like what some people are suffering in the families that have had someone die. It's just awful. So, I mean, we're not getting together for Thanksgiving. All families independently decided to have their own celebrations, and not even all their children are going to be present. So, take this seriously, and this is one of the ways that the governor can take it seriously, that wearing masks are absolutely necessary. I mean, I wear a seatbelt, and I stop at every stop sign. I mean, I, most of the time. Anyway, the point is that, the deal is that these are laws. I mean, these are, these are things for public safety, and this one is for public health. So, I, I don't want to be redundant, but I, I couldn't agree with you more. And I debated whether to speak, because I, I am pretty candid with some of the governor's staff sometimes, so I don't know that I'm exactly the most welcome person, so I'll either endorse this or condemn this, whichever helps. But I, I really am very much in favor, Commissioner Borgeson, and I applaud you, because this isn't easy, bringing this up, because of the people who oppose the masks, and particularly, they seem to come from your party. So, I appreciate your courage, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgeson.
I want to thank you, Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Kraft, for your comments. And I just want to stress, this doesn't mean, and we aren't saying as a board, that the mask is the end-all, be-all.
Sure.
What we're saying is, is that we want this as, yes, it's a tool, and we, people know it's a tool, but it needs to be a, a more aggressive tool in conjunction with the three Cs that the state is putting out there. So, again, it's not the end-all, be-all. It is the tool that we need at this point to bring our positivity rate down and to help those in this community, in this state, but again, our healthcare workers as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh. I'm happy to support this. I've been supporting mask mandates for the community, city, county, state, for months, and I'm glad to see that some of my colleagues have decided to come on board with that. The failure of the state to have a mask mandate is directly connected to the spiking of the state's numbers. Governor Ricketts, following Donald Trump's lead, refuses to allow us to use best health practices. The county should follow the city in having a mask mandate in the county. We should lead on this health crisis, not follow. This is good, as far as it goes, but it's a toothless resolution and will have no impact whatsoever on the governor's decision. We should do a mandate for the county. I testified in front of this board, in front of the city council. My son wrote a letter that got hundreds of cosigners from North High School on board, supporting a mask mandate months ago. We should do that now, rather than pass these feel-good resolutions, which will have zero impact on the governor's decision whether or not to have a mask mandate. I'll vote for it, but it means very little. So would a mask mandate. Commissioner Rogers.
You know, usually I would let that pass, Mr. Chair, but I'm, I'm past those days right now for the rest of the year. You know, kudos to your son and his friends for getting active. They should do that. But I wanted to be on record that the commissioner is not the lone supporter of mask mandates, and that if the Board of Health could have done that, we'd have done it in June. To allude to the fact that efforts are mute, that's fine. You keep going, you keep trying. But the records should show that we don't have the power, and people that were there in positions have been pushing at the table in public, behind the scenes, without the glory of it, to try to fight this. And it's an, and it's an ever-extending effort that is not worth. And it's an ever-extending effort that is not worthy of the continuing politicizing and grandizement of it. And I just want to make sure that I'm on record that people are trying and not taking this lightly.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead...
And if I may comment briefly?
Commissioner Kraft.
The... Mr. Kavanaugh said he's glad we all came on board. We were all on board to begin with. This misinformation and the innuendos that he likes to spread is just typical of his mannerisms and the way he acts. Thank you.
And thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote now. Oh, Louise, okay.
I agree that it has been politicized. It's been political discussions, but it really isn't coming from Commissioner Kavanaugh. And I think the commissioner, the Board of Commissioners is treating his posturing unfairly. Over the weekend, I went to Blue Line Coffee and I spoke with some of the opponents of the mask mandate that was issued by the city council. And one of them, even though both of them were wearing masks, one of them believed that COVID was created by laboratory or industry or manufactured. It was man-made. That COVID is man-made. That is the kind of misinformation that we should be concerned about, that this board should be concerned about, not what letter, you know, Commissioner's son got signed. I think he said a couple hundred students signed his son's letter. Good. That's the kind of thing we should be applauding. It was concerning to me during that discussion that I had over the weekend that these two individuals were convinced that the mask mandate was not needed, even though they both were wearing one because it was required. The misinformation on that front is concerning. I don't believe that COVID-19 is man-made. I think it's a virus that's probably been around for millions of years. The mask mandate is not stopping the spread of the virus. It is slowing it down. The only way that the virus can be stopped is if people don't contract the virus in the first place. So the health directives should be to that point. There's social distancing that isn't being enforced, although it is, you know, what is it? That it proposed, or something stronger than being proposed. It's not a directive. The mask mandate was strongly opposed by the governor, Pete Ricketts, in so much that he said that the health director of Douglas County, Dr. Adipour, does not have the power or authority to implement a mask mandate, even though council members are taking her lead. Dr. Adipour is taking... Or is using the city council to implement a mask mandate in Omaha. She has said here at the podium that she's not going to challenge the governor. She's not going to go to court, even though she could probably take him to court, or that she should take him to court and maybe CARES Act funding should be allocated for legal fees to that effect. The mask mandate is being used to lower the spread and lower the numbers. Currently, the numbers show that there is an increase of infection and that a rolling seven-day average of testing shows a 5% positivity and above. Those numbers or measurements were placed in an amendment in the city council, before city council, and it was... They were rejected. Instead, the mask mandate was continued until February, which allows the health director more leeway and flexibility to implement the mask mandate. Those are the kind of things that we should be considering, not like that Commissioner Kavanaugh or maybe myself is making this political. Those that are making this political are the ones who are saying that this is not a public health issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. Oh, Mary Ann, you want to speak? I'm sorry. Your resolution.
So the problem is when the vote starts and I stop it, then it cuts off everybody's mics.
Okay. Oh, there it is. Okay. So I just want to comment again that this is not a feel-good resolution. This is a resolution that is going to be directed at the one person in this state that can do something about the situation in which we're talking about. So again, I didn't put this on for feel-good. I put this on imploring to the person in the state who can do something about this as well as all of the other entities. We're jumping on board with the other entities in this state that have encouraged this. And we, as this board, that's all this is. So it is not a feel-good. It is a pleading of the... To the person who can make a difference and make it, implement it, a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. If we pass it, I assume we will?
Good.
Yes.
Feel-good and we all knew that, Mary Ann.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote then.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Not aware of anything else in open session, however. Pack a lunch. We have a long executive session planned. I don't ever remember one for five different reasons. We have litigation, personnel, negotiations, real estate, and legal advice. And it is scheduled to be up in room 903. We're going to go up there for better connections. Yeah, we'll take a 10-minute break before we go up there. Motion by Commissioner Borgerson, second by Commissioner Boyle to go into executive session for purposes of litigation, personnel, negotiations, real estate, and legal advice. Said meeting to be in room 903 in 10 minutes. Questions or comments? Then could we please vote? And there will be no further action taken in open session other than adjournment when we come out.
Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero.